Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My pleasure to be here with the whole committee. Our clerk of the day will be Mr. Gray. I know it's up to him. Welcome to the Center Seventeen Special Committee Level. I personally like to recognize that your own position of chair of the committee is in first nation. Ms. Gray is our clerk today, as I said. Question period.
The sheet is on the desk by the computers. And if during the meeting any member of the gallery has a question regarding an agenda item, please write your name and the agenda item on the sheet. And at the start of question period, the chair will call those who have signed up to the podium to address counsel. Ms. Gray, I understand we don't have any late items, correct?
That's correct, your worship.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Thorpe, Secretary Counselor Bonner, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Motion for the adoption of the minutes is presented. Counselor Armstrong, Secretary Counselor Hemmings, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. This is going to be a wonderfully educational afternoon, and council is very grateful for the work that no doubt staff has had to put into this. So without further ado, under reports, item A, waterfront walkway. Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to ask, or I'm going to turn it over immediately to Bill Corson, our Deputy Director of Community Development, to walk you through a presentation on the walkway project.
I'm glad of that, if for no other reason I'd have to look at their face. Who the hell did that come from?
All right. Thank you, worship. So I know there's been quite a lot of discussion lately on the waterfront walkway, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to give you a bit of a briefing on the project as it is. It's a large project made up of many phases, and we'll take you through it. There's been lots of consultation and work by staff on this to date. So we're just going to give you an overview. We'll take you through the engagement process that we did last year. I'll present the walkway itself through the actual alignment and routing, where it goes. We'll talk to you about some of the priority projects that we're working on right now, and then we'll wrap it up with next steps for you. So the waterfront walkway concept has been around for a long time, and as you know, there's about four and a half kilometers of it built to date. And there's not really any direction as to how we, which section we build next. It's been built somewhat haphazardly. The Newcastle Channel section gets built as Port Authority leases come in for renewal. The Bitterma Fale Sun Park has been built by the city. Down around the Boat Basin has been built by the Port Authority. And I think if you came to staff two years ago and said, "Which section should we build next?", wouldn't we have had a document or any direction as to tell you where to go? So the actual direction for this came in the first strategic plan from 2012 to 2015, and we just didn't get around to working on it, unfortunately, because we were quite busy at that time. And then in the last strategic plan, the 2016 to 2019 strategic plan, this concept was introduced as one of the key projects, which was to build a continuous walkway from Departure Bay to the estuary, like I say, which is a distance of about 13 kilometers. No timeframe in mind, but the idea is over a decade, two decades, we'd get this project finished. The walkway itself is mentioned in pretty much all our policy documents, including the official community plan, the transportation master plan, the neighborhood plans, parks and trails master plan, et cetera. So in 2016, we hired a consultant team to help lead us through this process of developing what we call an implementation plan, which basically shows how you get from where we are now with four and a half kilometers to finishing the project off. And so through the process and consultation with the public, we came up with these overall goals, which is a continuous uninterrupted accessible waterfront trail, making sure that local business is supported, and the marine industry is able to still operate from having the walkway where it's in its location. We'd improve public access down to the walkway from different places, from parks, et cetera. View corridors was important, and obviously the environment was important for protecting the marine habitat. So the first thing the consultants did was review all the supporting documents that are over on the right-hand side that talk about the walkway. There's also other planning work that go on before. So maybe about 15 years ago, we had looked at doing this section at the end of B.C. ferries, and they reviewed those plans as well as some of the work that had been done for the Boat Basin. And then we did some overall reports, looking at the whole walkway, the whole 13 kilometers. So environmentally, geotechnically, archeologically, what are the challenges? What do we need to be aware of? And then we began on this large stakeholder consultation process. So this was probably one of the bigger processes I've been involved with, and all these events were really well-attended. We, overall, we had six open houses, we had three surveys, we had a stakeholder design workshop. And really, the goal of this was to start from scratch and say, "What is a priority for you? What do you want this to look like? Where should we be focusing our efforts on?", as opposed to kind of coming to the public with our preconceived ideas. So the first three open houses we had were really that. It was, "We want to get from Departure Bay to the estuary. What does that look like? How should we get there? Where do you want us to invest?". Really good turnout. And then we did a survey, and we had almost 2,000 people respond to it, which is, you know, usually for a planning project in the city, that's pretty unheard of. So huge response and very positive feedback from the community as to that this project was a priority to them. So in terms of the survey questions, we asked people, "Where do you, which sections should we develop first?". And the number one was from Departure Bay to B.C. ferries, and the second was really along the Newcastle Channel, from B.C. ferries back to Mafal Sun Park. And then we asked, okay, should we be expanding narrow sections or focusing on new sections? And almost 90% of people said, "No, please, please build new sections." And there was a series of themes people wanted to see us work on.
Counselor Armstrong.
Just a question on that. When you, when the survey went out and we're talking about the sections, was the cost for each section put out so that people knew what they were voting on, cost-wise?
No, there was no cost at this point. So this was our first, our first open house, where we had no designs. It was really just the alignment itself.
Thank you.
So then, after those, those open houses and the first survey, we took some of the work and started design, and we had a stakeholder workshop here at the VICC. It was about, almost a full day, where we broke into six sections, and then we started figuring out how each section might work, various treatments, et cetera. And then that work, it came out of the workshop, then was used to start developing some options for the public to look at. And that's what was presented at these two open houses, number four and number five, which we showed, okay, here's how we think, here's what we think we heard from you, here's how you're gonna, here's how we think you would get from this section to this section, here's what it might look like. We did another survey. 700 people responded to that one, which again was, from our perspective, was a very good response rate. We kind of kept asking the same questions again, because we wanted to make sure we're going down the right track. So, "Do you actually support the walkway?". And 82% of people did. And then we said, "Which section do you want us to focus on?". And so of those 700 people, 75% said, "You should really focus on the Departure Bay section first". And then we gave them two options to look at. We said, "Okay, here's an elevated option, and here's an on-beach option". And we had some pricing there for those two. The on-beach options, more affordable. And the public came back and said, "Well, we still, six out of 10 people would like to see the elevated boardwalk". So then, of course, we kept going with our public consultation, because we like, like working with the community on these projects. So we, based on that feedback, we did some preliminary design work, did what's called a functional design, to actually get a better sense of what this thing might look like, the elevated option. And took that out to the people and said, "Okay, what do you think of this option?". People are starting to get a little burned out at this point. We only had 300 people do the survey at this point, but they came back with this feedback. So we actually attracted some new people, hadn't been involved in the consultation process in the past. We presented the elevated option. People, again, were quite widely supportive of this elevated option at that point. So that's kind of summary of the engagement we've done with the public to date, and I'll take you back through what the actual plan shows you. So the walkway itself's broken into six sections. And the reason we did this was because in the past, we'd focus on one little subsection, or segment, as we call it, as opposed to the whole project. So the goal this time is if one segment doesn't work, or there's not enough support for it, council can direct staff to work on a different section of the walkway. So I'll just quickly, I know these are kind of hard to see, but in Departure Bay, we recently updated the area in front of the 711 there, so that part's been complete. And then the idea is to connect along the beach in front of Soler to the White Eagle Trail, and then from White Eagle back to B.C. ferries. And for some of you, might have been back through the B.C. ferries sections, actually built behind the B.C. ferries terminal, all the way to Stewart Avenue. So that's that section. And we gave people options, again, whether it was elevated or on beach. This section's probably one of the most interesting ones, the Newcastle Channel, because in many ways, the city has a limited jurisdiction over this. This is the, most, the Port Authority has most of the jurisdiction here. And the walkway in this area has been built through lease renewals and, and built by tenants, actually, and it's maintained by the tenants as well. So there's actually four, there's only four gaps left here. Most of this section is built, but because it's, there's kind of missing teeth along the way, people tend not to walk down and use the walkway. And so we identified a few sections in here that needed to be, could be addressed, and we've been talking to the Port Authority about these and working with their tenants. But two sections that, we have a little bit of, the yacht club, the city owns the land where the yacht club is, and they've just renewed their lease, and as part of that, they're expected to widen the walkway to kind of the ultimate standard. And we have a letter of intent with them to help fund that in 2019 or 2020. And we're also working, we're leveraging a construction project on Cypress Street, on a project we call the Shipyard Detour Bypass, so that people, we assume the shipyard's going to remain as a shipyard for the foreseeable future, and this is to build a bit of a detour to get people back down to the waterfront, so they can stay off Stewart Avenue. Other than that, there's a few sections missing, which we know the Port Authority's working with on their tenants. Mafal Sun Park, so we already have the walkway in Mafal Sun Park, but for those of you who walk there, you probably know it's not in great shape. There's lots of triphazers, there's puddles, it's not wide enough. So the plan kind of looked at how we could improve the pedestrian experience around Mafal Sun. The area in front of Georgia Park, or the gap site on Front Street, that needs to be upgraded at some point, and we did have a, the developer was interested in working with us on that. Then the rest of the walkway is completed through the Boat Basin until you get to the Port Theater, and there's a gap from the Port Theater to Cameron Island, and we call that the missing Boat Basin section. And that section, we have an amended contribution from a developer at Port Place, and that was a section we were looking at doing in the near future as part of the Boat Basin redevelopment. But that has since changed, and I'll talk to you about that. And then the whole South Downtown Waterfront.
Counselor Armstrong.
I just want to go back to the, the one where we're going, where they come up from the base, and then they go up on Front Street, and then back down to Cameron Island. Why would we have to replace that? You can still see the water. Like, to me, that's a lot of money when it's already joined anyhow.
Yep. Yeah, no, that's a good opinion.
So it's just, it's just because it's a nice-to-have? Like, I mean, the thing I like about when they do come up onto the street, gives them the option of going to Port, to the mall, if they want to go there, which helps their businesses, then they circle right back down to the water anyhow, and they can still see the water. I just think, from my perspective, that's a lot of money to spend when they can already see it, and it's already joined. I just don't understand why we would do that. But thank you.
So it's a sidewalk right now. So it's a difference, a sidewalk versus a larger pedestrian facility.
Counselor Hemmings.
Thank you. Sorry, you mentioned Cypress Street. Can you just go back to that and tell me how that connects to this project? I know Cypress Street has undergone some recent changes. How they're connected?
Yeah, so the idea is, right now, when you come along the walkway, if you're heading north, you get to Cypress Street, where there's a cul-de-sac, and the waterfront suites has finished their walkway, but it's a bit of a dead end. So the idea here is you go up Cypress Street, the hill, which is steep, we recognize that. You'd go along Stewart Avenue for a couple hundred meters, and then it would actually be a, an easier bike pedestrian connection back down to the waterfront through the shipyard site, and that connects into the next development, which has built its walkway, but nobody would ever use it because it's a dead end. You can only go in and out. And then that would hopefully enable us to finish off the rest of the walkway to at least an interim standard, where it could be passable. Yeah. Yeah, and the South Downtown Waterfront, so this is a section along One Port Drive, along the city property, and then along the extension of Front Street to the Port Authority, where then people could tie in back to the cruise ship terminal. And there's another section where then it comes back into the city, down to Halliburton Street, which I'll show you next. So that takes you up to Halliburton, it's the Blue Line, and then Halliburton Street would be upgraded to include better pedestrian and cycling facilities. You have to avoid the cinema reserve and coastline because of the active industrial sites, so this is one section where it's not on the waterfront, but it provides a connectivity back down to the estuary.
Can you tell council what position, if any, cinema took on that section of the walkway?
So we haven't spoken to them as a council, but speaking to them as individuals, I think they support the idea of the walkway. A lot of their members walk, so I think they see this as a, as a positive act of transportation mode. Going through the reserve wasn't really, I didn't, we didn't get a lot of positive feedback on that.
Thank you.
And this is kind of the section of the walkway that was never really discussed in the past, but this is connecting down to the estuary. And the proposal here is, once you get past coastline, to get down to the rail, the rail bed, and run along the ICF corridor, over the Chase River Trestle, there's a trestle there. And then there'd be a new little bridge built to, to connect into Living Forest, and there's actually a, an old access road that's old, it's in the trees, that would connect along, and then down to the wheel at the park, which is part of the sandstone development. So that's kind of the full 13 kilometers. And the idea is that over a period of time, in the plan, we've said 10 years, but it could be longer, that all these sections would get worked on. So the idea is that instead of kind of waiting for a little subsection, we'd always be working on a section, and then over a period of time, this would be brought to fruition. So one of the first things we wanted to do was, okay, we've got this plan now, but where do we actually focus our staff time and resources? So we came up with a series of priority projects, and we tested these again with the public to see where people wanted us to, to spend energy and money on. So the Northfield Creek section, which is that section from the end of B.C. ferries to the first part of Soler, again, was, had the most support. The Asia Pacific Yacht Club and the detour around the shipyard are, I think, really shows that desire by people to finish off the Newcastle Channel, so that there's an alternative to Stewart Avenue for pedestrians and cyclists. The One Port Drive section was popular, and then, like Counselor Armstrong said, the Boat Basin, of those options, probably received the least amount of support, even though it was at 51%. So then we developed a phasing plan, so this was, okay, over the next 10 years, how are we actually going to deliver this? And this is where, I think some of you have seen that number of the 34 to $40 million dollar number that comes up. And the idea was, again, to constantly be working on a section, so that we can complete this over a period of time. And this is all set out in the actual plan itself. The idea is that by 2027, you have a connected walkway, then after 2027, you could actually go back and widen the narrow sections if need be, if there's demand warranted for that. So this is the funding commitments to date, just so you can see where, this was based on the 2018 financial plan, so this isn't what's in the budget this year, but this is what we had until, I guess, until December 31st this year.
Counselor Hemmings has a question.
Thank you.
If she doesn't, I do.
Mr. Corson, forgive my ignorance.
And Counselor Armstrong.
What is a P.I.L.T.S.?
Yeah, so those are payments in lieu of taxes, and those come from the Port Authority. So they make a contribution to us every year. As they don't pay property tax, they've given us the same payment each year for the last 15 years. And then that money generally gets used for waterfront projects in the city. So some of that money's been used for Mafal Sun Park in the past, and we've allocated some here to the walkway.
Thank you.
Counselor Armstrong.
For the community, or sorry, for the gas tax credit, is there a timeline when that expires?
Yeah, it does.
So what's the timeline, please?
So we're supposed to have the approvals for the project by March 31st of 2019.
Now, can that tax grant be moved to any other part, or does it have to stay with those two? Like, let's say, as a council, we decided we wanted to move on the Newcastle to the Anamo Yacht Club, can, instead of using Pilster, can you move the gas tax credit down there as well? Or is it specified for a certain area?
Yes, we had a conversation with them on Friday. The, when we got the, so just, we haven't got it, but we got a grant for $3.4 million for the waterfront walkway project, and that was for the Boat Basin section, One Port Drive, and the Northfield Creek section. And so the condition of that was that we would have the approvals in place by March 31st, and then they would, we have then four years to actually build the projects. It's become clear, because of the way the Boat Basin's shaping up, that the Port Authority wants to, the way they're going to phase the redevelopment, it's probably many years to get there, so that project's probably off the, off the books right now, or been delayed. One Port Drive is still on the books. It looks like we have all the approvals in place for that, so it's ready to go. Northfield Creek, we'll talk about in a minute. If you chose to do something different, the gas tax folks told us, it was kind of the One Port Drive and the Northfield Creek were just seen as significant projects to them, to actually have an impact, and that gave us a high score for our, for this. So they're not against the idea, but they'd have to reevaluate how much funding's coming to the city if we were to allocate that money elsewhere.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
Sorry, that's a long answer.
No, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, worship. And through you to Mr. Corson. The Pilts that we get, we also get Pilts from other organizations, right? Federal government, that sort of thing? Is that in, wrapped up in that amount, or is...
That's just NPA Pilts.
Okay.
Yeah. And we get Gilts as well, I think they're called, from the province.
And just demonstrating my profound grasp, oh, sorry, Counselor Brown. Counselors first, mayor last.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and through you to Mr. Corson. The, sorry, where was I? The Boat Basin, if that is delayed, would then the 1.35 gas tax grant also potentially be lost, if that...
Correct.
Okay.
Or it could be relocated. These are conversations we need to have with them.
Right, okay, thanks.
Counselor Bonner.
I'm, I think on my buttons, I can't see the red dot, I can't see if it's lost.
Just a couple of questions, and demonstrating my profound grasp of the obvious. So basically, all the public consultation, which was done prior, didn't have monetary amounts attached to it. It's, "Are you in favor of this, and do you like this section, and do you like that section?". Is that generally fair to say?
The latter one, the latter ones did. So the, once we got to the second stage of open houses, there were, there were funding amounts allocated to those.
And were those estimates consistent with what we see before us?
On there, yes.
Yes, okay. And when it, the section from White Eagle to Battersea Road, is that to Battersea Road, or is it actually going to, is the proposal to extend it along the waterfront between, if you will call it, the Kin Hutton?
Yeah. Yeah, so we haven't done the detailed design. This is really just to get to Battersea, and then there'd be another, through the, through the option that the public chooses, or council gives direction on, we would finish, we'd look at Battersea to Kin Hutt as probably part of that project. Right now, the idea is really just to use Battersea as it is, and...
And so the 14 million is just to get us to Battersea from White Eagle, is that?
That's the, that's if you went elevated. So the public said they wanted to go elevated up. I have a few more slides to, we were certainly heading down the elevated route until recently.
Can I just ask this question? I mean, a number of people expressed to me concerns around a non-elevated route, if I can call it that option, particularly with respect to the intertidal zone, et cetera. Do we, do we have any idea what the reaction of either federal fisheries or Ministry of Environment is to that kind of a walkway?
We just had some discussions on that. If I could, yeah, it's just, I will answer your question, but I mean, a few more slides.
You carry on. Counselor Turley first.
I'll wait until...
Okay, thank you.
So I just thought I'd take you through the projects that we're working on, so just you can see what these projects are. So this is the One Port Drive section of the walkway, which would wrap around the property. It's an interim walkway, so you can imagine, really, we're putting down, we're recycling the asphalt that's there, we're putting in some benches, we're delineating it, but it's, it's not what I would consider kind of the final walkway that, as you might see, in the lower mainland or something like that. The idea is through redevelopment, the walkway would then be brought to the final standard. And these were just some very simple renderings, but just to, we're not doing the barriers anymore, but to give you an idea of what it would look like. That's probably pretty close to what it would look like. With, and without development, that's what it would look like, until that site redevelops. And then this is the Northfield Creek section, just to give you an example. So you can see the existing walkway comes down the edge of B.C. ferries, and there's a set of stairs at the end right now. And then the idea is to tie into Beach Estates Park and the trail at the end of White Eagle. And that's kind of, this is the first stage that we've been doing the work on the last year. And this was the elevated option, so these were just some renderings of what the elevated option was going to look like. It was 7.2 meters wide, had a separated bike area, pedestrian area. And the idea... And the idea was then to continue this along, likely to Battersea, although there was no commitment to do that. This is a viewpoint from the end of, at Beach Estates Park, looking out at B.C. ferries. And this is down towards the White Eagle end. And there's, that's what the end would actually look like. So we got to this point in June, and we, because of the grant, we knew we needed to start submitting our applications to get them in on time. So we submitted our application to the province, and to DFO, and to Navigable Waters, to move on with this project. But as we did that, we also realized the costs, there was a lot of cost escalation on this project, from the cost of steel, from the design element of it. So what we wanted to do was, before we came back to council, we wanted to have kind of a sober second look at the project. And we hired a team of value engineering consultants. And what their job was to do was basically look at the project. They looked at 19 different components of it and basically gave us this second opinion as to what works on the project, what doesn't. They relooked at all the numbers, they looked at risk, they looked at, like you're mentioning, your worship, the environmental impacts of this project. And they basically came back and said, this walkway, the elevated walkway option is going to be very hard for you to build at the cost you have, or the budget you have for this. And they came up with some, another option, which is the more of the on-beach option, which they believe will significantly reduce the capital costs, removes a lot of the risk. They think it actually has a really positive spin for the environment, and the fact that Departure Bay Beach could actually be rehabilitated and brought back to encourage more spawning salmon and sea life, and it would actually be kind of a project that showcases environmental restoration with a walkway at the back. So it's almost a, this wouldn't be the waterfront walkway project, this would be the Departure Bay Beach Restoration Project that happens to have a walkway in it, which is maybe an interesting way of presenting it. So we just finished that work beginning of December. And that's kind of where we're at. So what we want to do is return to you early next year with some more discussion on that Northfield Creek section, and give you some options to consider and get some direction from you. We'd, the One Port Drive section, from our perspective, is ready to go, so we'd like to be tending that. We're doing the design work on the yacht club section this year to widen it, as per our letter of intent. We're doing the design work on the shipyard right now. And one of the things I neglected to talk to you about before was just the work we've been doing with B.C. ferries on the Gabriel Ferry Terminal redevelopment. So they are looking at redeveloping in 2020, 2021, and we've been working with them, the idea of having a walkway in front of the terminal that will connect Cameron Island to One Port Drive. And we presented them with three or four options, and we're just waiting to get feedback from them to see what they prefer, and then we'll be able to come back to council and seek some direction on that. So I think that's, yeah, that's all I have on the walkway.
Thank you very much, Counselor Turley.
Thank you, your worship. Through to Mr. Corson. So I didn't write it down, so my memory is not good enough to remember what it is. So the actual estimate cost of the elevated walkway to complete to Battersea Road was...
It depended, because the numbers, where's my wee friend? It's, it was 14 million for the elevated walkway at the time. I think it'll be higher than that. What was the on-beach?
I think on-beach is about a...
For the whole thing?
Beach, that's like, right now.
Yeah, so I think it was about a third of the cost to do on-beach option.
So it's three times the cost of the beach one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think the beach ones, you showed it four points something, didn't you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Hammond.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Corson. I'm having a hard time figuring how a walkway on the beach is going to be more environmentally sensitive than an elevated one, where there's natural flow of water and habitat restoration, et cetera. So what am I not getting there?
Yeah, I'd probably need one of the environmental consultants in here, but they basically rebuild the entire beach. So the beach gets raised. They do something called a green shores approach, where they, a coastal engineer comes in, and they bring in a lot of sand and planting, and, like Wrath Trevor Beach recently did that, and if you've been there recently, in front of Wrath Trevor?
Yes, okay.
So that was a green shores approach to, and the only, what happened was, people used to build seawalls to stop the water from erosion, but what that does, it just moves erosion farther down. So under a green shores approach, there's a, it's a natural way of managing beach processes. So what, basically, based on the conversation we had with those consultants, you're adding about two to three meters of fill on the beach, but then you're also spreading it down. And as part of that, you're increasing the, you know, the ability for fish spawning and for eelgrass and all those things. So right now, the beach is not in great shape. It's very rocky, and my understanding is that's not the way it used to be. It actually used to be quite a sandy beach, the whole thing. Yeah, so that's the idea. It's a big project, it's a huge, this is a big environmental project.
Right, okay, thank you. And follow up, if I may. Does this include the section that would come out at Beach Estates?
Uh, yes.
The green shores?
Yes.
Because I walk that trail, and the trail, like, the forest goes right down to the beach, so would then we pull, would we kind of take a little bit of that forest, reclaim it, and...
Yeah, there's two options there, from what I understand. One is, you actually build the beach out, and you create these back channel marshes that fish and wildlife can swim into. Or the other is to do a toe of slope, which would be removing the vegetation on those specific areas.
Oh, okay.
Kind of like a cut, and more like a Stanley Park seawall.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Castleberg.
Through to the chair, to Mr. Corson. I was just curious, with the beach restoration project, I have two questions. The first one's the beach restoration. Does the restoration part add to the cost, or is it, that $3.5 million is what that cost would be to do the beach restoration in the path?
Yeah. Well, when the consultants looked at actually building the elevated approach, our value engineering consultants, there was really two ways of building the elevated. One was, you start off at the end of the walkway, and you put two piles in, bring the deck in, and you kind of build as you go, so you stay off the beach. The other is to actually bring, build a temporary road, which is a strong term, but has to be elevated so the equipment's out of the, high enough out of the water. The cost of building that road was the same as the green shores approach. And then you would actually be ripping that road out and leaving. So that was one of the elements that our functional design didn't really look at, was the constructibility. And that was a real eye-opener for us, was, we were quite glad that we stopped at that point and had this chance to look at the project. Yeah, so it's about the same price to, basically, the temporary road and to build the elevated walkway is the same price as building the actual on-beach walkway.
Right. Thank you. And the second question is, I just received an email, I think from FCM, but there was federal grants for nature, habitat restoration, accessibility for people. So potentially, there could be some funding for that.
Yeah, I think, you know, reframing this project, it certainly has a wider appeal, and it seems to be hitting a lot more marks, perhaps, that might, that might interest people who offer grants, you know?
Thank you.
Counselor Thoreau.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, thank you, Mr. Corson, for your background and your briefing on this, a huge project, and a long-term project, and one which has already involved, as you've indicated, a huge amount of public consultation. So I know that this council is new to the project, and everybody individually has their own, or is forming their own viewpoints on how much they support it, what portions of it they might support more than other portions, and so on. And it's something that we need to have a discussion about as a council. So I guess I'm curious about next steps, because I know that there is some timeframe issues regarding the gas tax funding, but we need to have an opportunity, and I guess I'm addressing this through the mayor, to our city manager, Mr. Lindsay, we need an opportunity for council to basically hear each other's views on this and decide as a council where we stand, and how much we want to fund, and where, if we want to proceed with this. Because let's face it, there's been rumblings from this council that we're not as supportive of this project as possibly a former council was. I've got my opinions, but that doesn't matter. But council needs to determine what the priority is for council. So I guess I'm asking, when will those conversations take place? Hopefully, early in the new year? Mr. Lindsay?
Certainly, through your worship, certainly, the next opportunity, we're going to come back, as outlined here, on next steps, is come back early in the new year to have a discussion specifically about the, about the portion from Island ferries, or sorry, from B.C. ferries over to Battersea. So we'll have that discussion, and at that time, there'll be an opportunity for council. I think what's important, though, is that, because it's not, we talk as if it's one project, right? And it's really not, it's a number of different projects. And I think that what's great about this is there's really almost a menu where council can pick and make individual decisions, and we can change our priorities over time. So it's a very flexible living document that way. But overall, and you'll notice, I think Mr. Corson's done a good job of aligning the costs here, but I think if somebody was here from the finance department, they'd be reminding us that everything in this budget is from long-term borrowing. So there's still really, ultimately, needs to be that final decision from council on how we obtain approval for a long-term borrowing, and if that's the option that council wants to proceed in, whether it's on one project or a combination of these projects.
Those are good reminders. Thank you very much.
Counselor Armstrong.
I thank you. Two questions, if I may, through you to Mr. Corson. Now that the Port Authority is changing their direction, has there been discussions with them to see if they're still in favor of this, with their changes, with their vehicle processing plant, and the other plans that they're now putting forward?
Yeah, no, so we, the whole of the design work for the Front Street Extension was done with the Port Authority.
No, but there's been a change now with managers, there's a change in board, and they're moving in a different direction, so I'm just asking if the support still remains for that plan based on what they're now changing their plans to?
Certainly, I mean, I speak to Mr. Davidson of the Port Authority Weekly, and I haven't heard any different direction from him on this, I think.
And then my last question, I know that we're putting in through for cyclists, but what about for scooters? Because there's a lot more of our population using electric scooters, will that be wide enough for electric scooters to utilize?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, so that's why we, you know, one of the big discussions we've had is kind of the whole mobility issue, right? And making sure that it's not just for people riding bikes, it's for people in wheelchairs, it's for people with other mobility issues, whether on scooters.
Walkers.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why we've kind of gone with this wider width to accommodate active transportation. We feel this is kind of the biggest, this is kind of the spine, one of the spines for the city's transportation corridor.
I just want to thank you and your staff, too, for all the work you did on it, because this is a very huge undertaking, and I like how it's broken down, so thank you.
We have a great team, so very lucky to work with them.
Thank you, Counselor Martin.
Thank you. Through the chair. So if I understand, if we took out that one little section, the One Port Drive, right, it has a cost of a million, but that's already funded through the gas tax grant, if we proceeded?
Yeah, my, Ms. Mercer might come after me.
That's why I'm...
Yeah, I believe, so right now, the gas, we have it in our budget, the gas tax money is covering it at the moment. In order for us to spend that money, we need to clarify with UBCM that they will allow us to change the scope of the project, to include this, to decrease the scale of the project. Now she's going to come save me.
Ms. Mercer.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, with the, currently, the One Port Drive is funded strictly from gas tax, gas tax grant. Now, depending on how the other segments go, we may have to go back and re, have that reevaluated with the grant committee, but as of right now, that's how it is funded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, again, to Mr. Corson. We've seen some of these projects, if we build them, we may be ending, we may be creating dead-end walkways. Are they going to be able to facilitate emergency vehicles?
Yes, that was one of the design criteria we looked at on the Northfield Creek section, was how you actually get equipment down there. So the elevated section, because at the time is being designed by, with cranes, could support like, you know, could probably support a vehicle, like an ambulance or something like, maybe not a fire truck, but going forward, I guess, that's just one of the design criteria we'd want to include. If we were going to change the scale of this project or the scope, would be what type of vehicle needs to be able to get down there. So that's something we could include. I mean, right now, you know, around the Boat Basin section, I don't know if you could drive a vehicle on those sections, you could certainly drive a gator or something like that. One Port Drive section's largely on land, so it's not an issue, yeah.
And if I may, one more question to Ms. Mercer, who took off. Is the gas tax grant, is that money that comes to us on a regular basis anyway, and we can allocate it, or is that something that if we don't use it for this project, it goes away?
Through you, worship, to Counselor Bonner, yes, that is correct. We, it will, if we don't, this grant is specific to this project. If we don't use it, we can't apply it to a different project.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to staff. Just a point of clarification, where it says budget, I assume that's 100% funded by the funding source? No tax on the table? So like, you know, if One Port Drive is 100% funded by gas tax grant, grant at a million dollars?
Right, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As of today.
As of today. And then, if I may, your worship, the Boat Basin is obviously, has some additional considerations around it, in terms of timing, and that Northfield Creek, due to the significance of that portion, the cost of that portion, and possible some redesign, will come back to council in the new year for additional discussion and...
Yes, what I would like to do is actually have someone a little more well-versed in the green shores approach, to probably come speak to you about that, what it means. And we'll put together a report that has options for you, and you can then decide how you wish to proceed on that section.
Right. And so as it stands now, with the exception of the Boat Basin and Northfield Creek, these other items are ready to advance? Or are in the process?
Yeah, so the Newcastle Channel, we haven't done any work on the Asia Pacific Yacht Club yet. The shipyard we're working on right now, the yacht club, we've done a preliminary design, but we need to actually do the design work this year. And the Gabriel Ferry Terminal, we've done design work on. So I wanted to put this slide up because I wanted to make sure you understood that, even though we have a lot of projects on here, we actually haven't, we haven't spent money on all these projects. We've been able to do mostly with staff time or leveraging other projects to actually pay for the design work. So you're kind of, you have a blank, you're not locked into any of these if you don't want to be.
So then, just a clarification on Mr. Lindsay's comment around, what exactly is, would be paid for from long-term borrowing?
So these are the shorter-term projects that we talked about. I was talking about the longer-term projects, the broader projects that I think that were defined in the plan that Mr. Corson identified in his earlier slides, the more, the larger elements of the walkway, I guess.
Thank you. Counselor, Ms. Gury, sorry.
Thank you, worship. I just had a question for staff for clarification, and I think it might help council as well. For the gas tax, which is the full amount of the funding for the One Port Drive section, that funding, the reason that we would have to go back and talk to them some more, because is that funding and approval for that portion based on the scope of the project as a whole as it stands now? So changing other parts of that project could not make that funding available for that one section? And then, the large project as a whole, when it's broken out into funding, the long-term borrowing requires approval of the electors, so the only way a municipality can obtain long-term borrowing is through approval of the electors, which would mean either the alternative approval process, which we did... the electors, which would mean either the alternative approval process, which we did for the Fire Hall, and/or it's fondly, or not fondly known as a referendum, it's actually assent of the electors is what the appropriate word is. So those are the two ways that you would have to get approval for that.
Thank you. Counselor Hammond.
Thank you. Through you, actually to Mr. Corson and Ms. Gury, maybe I'll start with Ms. Gury because you just brought it up. So you're saying that the gas tax that we could be receiving for these, we, if we start tinkering with the process as a whole, we might compromise our ability to get those grants? And secondly, I just want to confirm with Mr. Corson, what do we need to do by the end of March in order to secure that? I heard you say we have four years to build, but what do we need to have in place in the next three months?
Yeah, this is the challenging part. You need to have all the approvals in place to actually build those sections. So One Port Drive is great because we've done the design work, we've got our agreements with C-SPAN in place with the port, it's, the approvals are there for that one. You know, for the Boat Basin, we'd have to get a bit, if we were going to do that section, we'd have to have a lease with the Port Authority for that area where it'd be built out and the environmental approvals. And then on the, on the Northfield Creek section, it's, you need a lease from the province, you need DFO approvals, and you need navigable waters approvals. So we've submitted all those in July, and we've been in contact with them. Those agencies know that this is a priority project, and they're trying to provide approval for the end of March of 2019. But I think based, to be frank with you, based on that value engineering work we did, the project's likely going to morph, which would then change the approvals. And so I don't, regardless of what council does, I don't, and as you said, let's go ahead with the project as is, with a substantial extra funding component to it. I don't think, you're not going to be able to hit those dates. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And your worship, just to follow up on her first part of the question, I would just like, my, what I thought was happening, I'd just like finance to confirm that because I don't want to have missing information out there.
Your worship, I think I need to step in here. Process-wise, what I understand the planning department would like to do is come back to you in around February with more precise information. I've asked Ms. Mercer to furnish that with precise fiscal information about the options and consequences of that, and that from that committed the whole environment, you could then come here to make decisions in March before the end of the month, if that is the timetable that we're looking at. And it's my understanding that we're specifically looking at the departure Bay Area part of this at that time. We're also going to have a subsequent discussion this afternoon about One Port Drive and that, so I wouldn't want to prejudge any conversation about that section, but this would be more about the, you know, the departure Bay end of it. So process-wise, just get it on the table today, flush out some questions, seek any, if there are any specific asks, come back with precise information around where we think we are, meaning the city, on this revised version of that stretch, and then to seek direction from council. So just again, just to comfort you, no decisions today, any input's good. Come back in February for a more specific conversation and leading to decisions at the council table around March. Am I correct, the planning department, is that, I think that's where we were suggesting we go.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. Counselor Armstrong.
One of the concerns that I have, your worship, is I think we need to really seriously look at those pieces that are having the gas tax credit because that's something that is only a one-time opportunity. So for me, I think that's really important. However, I do struggle with the Boat Basin. I don't know if that needs to be done, so I would like to know what impact that would have if we removed that from the gas credit because there's already, in my opinion, a pretty good existing trail, but that's just my opinion. So I would like to know if that, what impact that would have if we removed that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, your worship. Going back to the Boat Basin thing, NPA is going to be building, rebuilding the docks and the wharfs and everything along there, but we're only talking about the very edge of the water for our part, right?
That's correct, yes.
So we could actually build that without necessarily interfering with what, you know, Port Authority has plans for, because we're only going to widen those sidewalk, I'm guessing, correct?
The idea was to basically continue on as it is in front of the Port Theater, which would be a cantilevered walkway.
Okay.
And the thinking at the time was that if they were bringing in pile driving equipment, et cetera, we would be able to leverage that with them and joint with them.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone further? If not, a motion to receive?
Motion to have that report titled One Port Drive Background Information dated 2018, December 17th, UBCM for information.
Seconded, Counselor Bonner. Any discussion? Counselor Turley.
You said One Port Drive, I thought that was just the water.
Sorry, yes, waterfront walkway, project summary, period.
Oh, I'm wrong, I'm sorry. The walkway.
We're just talking walkway.
The walkway, project summary.
And that's what Counselor Bonner seconded.
I'll second that friendly amendment.
Heading discussion. All those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thanks for keeping an eye on that.
Mr. Lindsay, item B, One Port Drive.
Thank you, your worship. Again, when information reported included in your agenda this afternoon, but we also have a presentation to walk you through on this topic, and Mr. Corson has not moved from the podium because he knows I'm going to throw it immediately to him, but he has some other staff who I think are going to join him and walk you through this project.
A fixture in the, for the firmament of our planning.
Aren't you lucky? I know. Yeah. Yeah, so another really big project that we've been working on over the last five years anyway. So I'm going to do the first part, and then Karen Constraw from our Plan Department is going to take you through South Downtown Waterfront and the One Port Drive Master Plan. And Phil Stewart from our Engineering Department is going to talk to you about the secondary access study that we've done and the waterfront walkway piece and the interim road project. So you get some more information on that. So you only have to bear with me for a few more minutes and then you get some fresh voices. So I think most of you are familiar with the property itself. So this is the property that the city purchased from CP Rail in March of 2013. It's 26.7 acres in size, and what's unique about it is it includes a fee simple water lots, so the city actually owns the land and the water there. The Gabriel Ferry Terminal is just to the north. The Port Authority owns a piece of property that we call the Bowtie, which is kind of that remainder piece of land between the pink property line and the Gabriel Ferry Terminal. You have the NYMO Assembly Wharf lands to the east, over there you can see the cruise ship terminal. And then CP Rail owns the remainder of the rail yard south of the wooden trestle. So this is, this acquisition started back in 2012, and we completed it in March of 2013. And this is the acquisition, this is the rationale that we used in the end of 2012 to buy the property. Things have changed since then, but these were the reasons we presented to council for buying the property. And I think the first point is probably the most significant one, which was really for the city to take a lead in stimulating the redevelopment of the waterfront. There was a strong belief that if the property just sat as what, as is, or sold as an industrial site, it would likely remain that way for a long time. A big issue at the time was access. The Port Authority had just built the cruise ship terminal, and there was no, there is no public access to the Assembly Wharf property. It's over the wooden trestle, which is at the end of its life, and the way to get down there is via right-of-way agreement. So this was something that the Port Authority and CP were kind of going back and forth on, who actually owned the trestle and who was going to repair it. And because of that, the trestle just kind of kept rotting. And we've kind of felt as a municipality that this was maybe a role that we could step in and actually help address. Also at the time, before the Conference Center was built, the Transit Exchange used to be down in this location, and when the Conference Center was built, it was relocated to the current Perdoo location on an interim basis. And the RDN had been looking for a site, for a downtown transit exchange. And with this property as an industrial site, there was a, one of the rationale was to relocate the Transit Exchange down onto the property. The city had a MOU with the RDN actually stating that we would work with them to flush that out a bit. That's changed since then, but again, this is the rationale in 2012. The other, another key issue was a master plan. So CP Rail said, as part of the acquisition, part of our purchase of the property, they wanted us to do a larger master plan for their lands as well, so they could get a sense for what they're, they could do with their property. And that's kind of where the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative came out of. But really, when we bought the property, we really felt it was just going to be a long-term hold because, as I'll show you on the next slide, there were so many encumbrances on the property, there was actually very little land to develop. And, you know, so as a staff member, I felt this is great, we're going to buy this property in March of 2013 and won't have to do anything with it until I retire in 2040. But that changed, so there's been lots of work on this property. So these were the encumbrances when we bought the property. So we knew that C-SPAN had this right-of-way on the property, and it's 15 and a half acres, it's the green and kind of the light blue. And basically, under the encumbrance, they have the perpetual right to use that property, they don't pay rent, and as long as they roll a truck off the ramp once every 180 days, it's theirs. So there's no way to really leverage them out of there. And then Island Corridor Foundation has this right-of-way on the bottom there, the yellow for the rail yard. And again, that runs in perpetuity as long as there's a rail yard in place.
And may I just ask something, just being a little overly technical? It's described as a right-of-way, so it's a right-of-way in the sense that it involved a federal railway. Is that the concept, as a statutory body, as opposed to a private easement?
Yeah, so I guess it was, it was a way for them to get around subdivision approvals. They were able to basically carve off a piece of land without having to do works and services, pay DCCs, all those things. So they sold it at a discount. It didn't, when they sold it, when CP sold it to the right-of-way to C-SPAN, it was, had so many cents on the dollar, not 100, yeah.
Thank you.
And then we had two tenants, so we had GAD Marine who was a tenant, they were a barge operation, and Island Pallet Solutions were the other tenant. They were both on short-term leases, so those were the, those were the pieces of land we knew we could do something with, but really the majority of the land, kind of the key piece in the middle was inaccessible. And this was just the Transit Exchange, so I talked a little about that. But the idea was that of this property, really around the Island Pallet Solutions or the area south of Island Pallet Solution, there might have been a chance to build some sort of transit exchange there. And like I say, that is no longer on the tables, but that was at the time. Me and Mr. Stewart just talked about the trestle. We call it the Bionic Bridge, but he'll give you some more input on it.
Yeah, so as Bill mentioned, we inherited the trestle with the property purchase in 2013, and it's the only way to get down to the port lands. And it was in really poor shape when we got it. We made repairs almost immediately because we had an engineer's report that said it couldn't handle the buses that the cruise ship was planning on ferrying passengers to downtown with, so we had some emergency repairs that year. Followed up with repairs again in 2015 and in 2018, probably put about $200,000 or $300,000 into this bridge since we bought it. And then we had another inspection this year, which said, okay, the bottom's doing okay now after all those repairs that are circled in yellow, clamps and bracings and additional piers. And they said we probably should turn our attention to the deck, which is falling apart, and there's some cracking in the underside of the deck and some pretty heavy corrosion to the girders. And we're kind of waiting a little bit till we figure out exactly what we want to do with it, because the type of repair depends on how long the trestle needs to be in place. But eventually, the trestle will have to come down and be replaced with some other option for access. The other thing that is really important to realize is that trestle is load restricted, so big vehicles can't use the trestle. Right now, it's not a big issue because there's the occasional truck that comes out of the port, and they have an agreement with, between C-SPAN and the city to use Front Street and kind of get the access out there. But with the new Vehicle Processing Center, they're looking at about eight trucks per day coming out of there, and that gravel road access and undefined entrance into Front Street isn't going to be as functional as it is right now, so. And then the other thing to note, kind of in addition to what Bill mentioned, is that the plans in the port lands changed substantially since 2013. You know, the Western Marine Response Center, Vehicle Processing Center, heli jet, and even the passenger ferry wasn't really considerations at that time, but now they're all being talked about as fairly short-term initiatives, which could change the traffic patterns there and increase like track loading, that type of thing. Bill?
Thank you.
So yeah, the trestle's one of our big issues, and it's really kind of, it drives a lot of the work we've been doing is to try to find this alternative access, because we don't want to rebuild the trestle as it is. So I'll just take you through the various projects that we've done on the property, and I'll just go into these in very high level. But one of the first things we did when we bought the property was a whole lot of environmental work. We wanted to understand the nature of the property. Some of you probably know, the majority of this property is fill, so it was all brought in from the mine, it was just to the south, and it's largely made of coal waste. And CP had done environmental studies on the property, and then those were getting a bit dated, so we updated all the studies specifically to this new parcel of land against the current Ministry of Environment standards. And this kind of started showing us that the majority of the site is actually, does not need to be remediated. You can actually risk manage the site as long as you know where the hotspots are. So those are, there is, are outlined, are the hotspots, and two B and two A are largely hydrocarbons, one is metals, and down on three in the panhandle there, those were from the old green chain from the sawmill that you can almost see outlined there. But the kind of key message we got from the environmental consultants was, as long as it's capped, you really don't need to do much with it. And so you'll see that this kind of drive, drove a lot of our planning work, especially when you see the road alignment and development sites, you'll see that they respect kind of the idea of covering and capping the environmental areas. The other thing we needed to look at was the water lot, it hadn't been studied before, and there's a lot of, as an active marine area, a lot of soils that had fallen off ships over time, and so they examined the entire water lot and looked for what was in the, in the sediments there. And the key recommendation of that was, you just had to limit, what was the term, these human receptors from there. So the idea is you're not supposed to go crabbing here or swimming. So we're supposed to put up a sign that says, no crabbing, no swimming, that's the extent of the remediation. If we wanted people to go swimming here, or we wanted people to go crabbing, then we need to do a lot more environmental work. Another thing we did relatively early on was, there was an old dock next to the Gabriel Ferry Terminal that we inherited called the CP Dock, that had been there for eons, it was full of creosote and was on its last legs, it was about to float away to Gabriel, so we took that out, and that cleaned up the front of the water lot. And then we terminated the leases with GAD Marine and with Island Pallets. This is what the Tent City Site used to look like before we cleaned, before it arrived. So this was a big, a big project by the council at the time to remove the tenant and to start doing select demolition on the property, to where it looks today where it's all been cleaned up. And really, this was all about gaining the site. All the work we've been doing has really been about removing barriers, because when we purchased the property, the private sector wouldn't have touched this because there's just way too much stuff to take on, but we've solely chipped away at it. It's kind of like the waterfront walkway, you know? Every year we do a project, we take something off of it till the point where, I think for your good fortune, you know, next year you're in a spot where you can actually start, you know, doing something on a property and showing some positive change. Another thing we did was an archaeological impact assessment. So when we were removing the Island Pallet Building, we had an archaeologist on standby, even though this was not a registered site, we just wanted to make sure we were being careful. And when the Island Pallet Site, when you're, as they were digging down about five meters, they came across some beams from one of the old longhouses, so that's the lower area you can see that's been identified. And then after that, we did an overall study for the whole property, and they did select testing throughout the, where the shoreline used to be, and found another potential site up on the Bowtie Property owned by the Port Authority, so not on our land, but the top one you see there is, is on NPA land.
Counselor Armstrong.
Just a follow-up on that, since archaeological stuff was found, is there an MOU?
Is there an MOU in place with Snamo if we were to move ahead or is that yet to be drafted?
There's not one in place at the moment, no.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last piece of this was the C-SPAN right-of-way transfer, which some of you are probably familiar with. So this was how do we actually deal with this fifteen and a half acres that can exist in perpetuity? So we, in 2014, C-SPAN actually announced that they were going to be moving out to Duke Point, which was kind of what led to all of this. So that was great news for us as a city and for C-SPAN that they're going to get a modern facility. But we had to kind of come to a compromise on how we would work with them to respect their rights. At the same time, create some development opportunities for the city. So we entered an MOU with them. It laid out how we were going to, how we were going to value the land, how we were, what areas of land they were interested in keeping for operations, et cetera. And, and that kind of resulted in where we're at today, where we've entered into the purchase agreement with them. We're just removing the last of the, of the conditions with them. So basically, everything north of the railway tracks is free to the city for redevelopment. C-SPAN is going to keep that portion of the water lot for their barge ramp so they can keep rail service going. And then there's the actual rail yard itself and land next to it will be used for industrial purposes. And this is all consistent with the, the master, the one-port drive master plan. So the specifics of the deal are that we're making a cash contribution to them as well as transferring the lands under there to them. And we're just working on the certificate of compliance work, which is from the Ministry of Environment that lets them use those lands for their purpose. And the closing date for this is April fifteenth, 2019. And now Karen's going to talk to you about all the great planning work that's been going on. And you get a break from me. Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Hi, hello folks. I think this is the first time I've appeared before you as a council. Congratulations on your election. So I'm going to walk you through the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative, which was before my time in Naimo, but I believe some of you were involved in that process, began in 2013. The terms of reference were approved in, I think, June of 2013 and the final two documents were ready by December 2013. So it was a fairly compressed process, but involved a lot of public engagement and...
Counselor Turley is already hot in the bit here.
Sorry to interrupt your worship. Actually, it was a question for Bill Corson. So a citizen told me, and I don't believe him, that, but I wanted to clarify, that truck traffic is not allowed on Front Street. I'm thinking like, ever since I was a kid, there's been truck traffic on Front Street, so I don't quite follow that. Can you confirm whether that's yes or no? I'm talking about from where the roundabout is be out to Nickel Street.
So my understanding is truck traffic is obviously allowed to the Gabriel Ferry Terminal? Because they have to be able to get there. And the C-SPAN property until a year ago was a truck terminal. So there was a lot of truck traffic going in and out.
That's what I thought the answer was. Thank you.
Very good.
All right.
Carry on, please.
So the process in, of the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative was for not just the property that the city purchased, but the entire South Downtown Waterfront, so about a hundred and forty-six acres. The property involved five landowners and there was a South Downtown Waterfront Committee that had representation from eight different stakeholder groups, including the city and the regional district of Naimo, as well as some of the property owners. So the, obviously, it was a fairly compressed process. They didn't have all the information that we have today about our property or the broader property. But the goal was not to do detailed land use policies, but to develop a vision and guiding principles for the future of the South Downtown Waterfront. And these were the guiding principles before you that they came up with. One, promote access and connectivity to local neighborhoods. Two, support an evolving working harbor, recognizing the industry, industrial land uses. Three, promote ecologically positive development, understanding that we are in an age of climate change and the need for climate resiliency. Four, promote bold visionary and resilient land uses. And finally, embedding culture and social considerations in future land use decisions. So that was the guiding principles that were passed on to us for the Waterfront Master Plan. And this process was presented to council, I think in 2014, early 2014. I'm just showing you here some of the visions that were contained in the technical background report. Obviously, no one's going to have one, a, a large group of people is not going to have one vision for the detailed land uses. So there are a number of land uses which are offered, but there's common themes. And this is where the guiding principles came from, looking at what's really important to our community as far as our future development. What kind of values do we want to uphold? And, and I'm sure many of you have copies of the technical report and the guiding principles. And if you don't, they can certainly be provided to you. This has been shown as well. These are just some of the road networking concepts that you can see that came out of these visions. All of them do include some sort of front street access like that. Of course, the details of that would, would differ considerably depending on what was being envisioned. But just so you understand that we were looking at what was contained in the technical document as we move forward with the master plan later on. And in fact, we had the same consultant engaged for that process as for the later process. So he had all the historical knowledge on that. So moving forward to 2015, we began the Port Drive Waterfront Master Plan, which was just for the lands the city had purchased, looking at providing detailed policies to guide the future development of the plan area. So there was a five-phase planning process. Each phase involved stakeholder and public input. It ended up being a longer process than we intended, in part because it was paused in the Center for the Event Center Referendum. As you know, that was proposed for this area. And so we had to pause the planning process as we move forward because we needed to know the outcome of that decision first. And also involved some direction from council about consideration about the potential of locating an ocean discovery center on the property. So those are some of the things that added time to the process, but it was finally approved last April. So what kind of things does the Port Drive Waterfront Master Plan look at? There's sort of four main objectives. Land use and density, establishing a strong public realm and open space. It does contain the kind of design guidelines that you would look at if you were doing a DP for the area. Access, formalizing the road network and as well active transportation, so improved pedestrian and cyclist access to the waterfront. And extended public transportation. There's not a public, there's not a transit, transit hub on the property. What we've done is we've expanded Front Street to accommodate bus service. And that is why there is in the final version, a roundabout, a big part of that, although that's not always as good for pedestrians and cyclists. That is better for bus turning. We learned a great deal through this process about the difficulties of crossing a railway. So that was some of the considerations as well. The road network actually works on a functional level, which again is not necessarily information that we had during the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative. Environmentally, you understand there's a lot of challenges to this site. We want to make sure that we're doing our best to restore the environment and recognize any future challenges that climate change may cause. And finally, the context adjacent to a working harbor, we wanted to recognize, we got a lot of comments during our open houses about why does there still industrial land on this site? That's not the best and highest use of this land. It's like, well, now we give them some background on the constraints you heard about earlier from Bill. So that is the four objectives. We had a fair amount of community engagement. I want to say that we did consider the community engagement done as part of the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative to be, this is part of a continuing conversation. But we had stakeholder meetings early on in the process to identify issues and opportunities. We had an open house during the options development stage. And we had an online survey that went with that with over four hundred people. And then we had a final open house in March, I believe. I saw a great number of you there at that time. And there were things that changed through the process, like when we presented the draft plan, there was a lot of people who said this has buildings up to fifteen stories in it. The South Downtown Waterfront Initiative only says six stories. And it's like, well, actually, if you look in the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative, there is allowance for buildings greater than the six stories if it's done in a sensitive and considerate way. And, you know, someone would ask me, like, what does bold and visionary land use mean anyway? So I was looking through the documents, like, one of the things they talk about is consideration should be given to promote a land use that attracts the largest number of people and jobs to the area. Obviously, that's just one of many considerations. But if we want to have a dynamic downtown, we need to have people living there too. So the mid-rise contains provisions for buildings up to twelve stories. And we believe that was a fair compromise. We did bring it down after the last open house. But we thought it was a good balance between our overall objectives for cities, have a dynamic downtown, but also preserve the view corridors. And there's design considerations for that as well on the plan. Yeah, there were other things that changed as well. We can talk about those if you like. But I just wanted to give you a sense that this wasn't a document that was done totally internally. We, we listened to the community. We tried to make it a dynamic conversation. But it was also highly technical process because there are many technical considerations on this property that we needed to take into account. So we weren't always able to realize every vision from the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative, but we, we did do our best to do that. So I think the next one is the secondary access. I'll pause here for any questions.
Counselor Hemmings.
Thank you through you to Ms. Kronstall.
Yes.
The South Downtown Waterfront Committee, did the water, sorry, I get them mixed up. The one-port drive master plan, did it ever go back to that committee? I know it had disbanded, but did, did you ever kind of approach those folks who had led that visionary process to say, this is what we've come up with for a portion of these lands? Does it jive with what you guys designed, thought about, et cetera?
We talked to many of the same stakeholder groups. It wasn't always the same individuals who were representing. And in fact, even between the beginning and the process and the end of the process, some of the representatives changed, which is always a challenge, right, just having to send them back, say, oh, actually, you know, the head of this association prioritized this. But we didn't necessarily go back specifically to those individuals. We thought it was more important to contact the current representatives for the organizations.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you through the chair. Just to back up a bit, what was the reasoning for the large area for industrial zoning?
Those are the lands constrained under the, through the chair to you. Those are the lands constrained by the right-of-way that was shown in the previous slide. Let me go back to that. Yes, so the area that you see where the right-of-way is, those areas are preserved as light industrial in the master plan.
Oh, I see. Okay.
There is some language in the master plan recognizing these uses may transition over time, but that's not something we want to presume at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, if anyone has any comments later, feel free to contact me.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, your worship, through you. I'll comment right now and that is to say thank you. And I think it's very valuable for council to know that a lot of work and thought has already gone into this hugely important area of our city. The last area of downtown waterfront that is yet to be developed. And for me personally, this is going to be an absolute priority and we need to do it right. And I am again expressing my personal opinion, but I'm so pleased to hear you reference the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative work because I'm afraid that seems to have been shelved for the past several years. Maybe we got derailed due to the event center. But I think it's a very valuable document and I think it's a worthwhile starting place for future discussions on this whole area. So I'm glad that we're still referencing that. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Derailled. Yeah, that was unintentional.
I was describing brilliance to you, Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Turley.
Thank you, your worship, through you too. I'm not sure who can answer this, but I'll ask the question first, hanging aside. So on page fifteen of the master plan, the South End Neighborhood Plan, there's a statement at the end of their section here as pedestrian and road connections are also considered for Crays, Finlayson, Milton and Farquhar, but do not include the redirection of heavy, heavy truck traffic through the neighborhood. So does that mean the Farquhar Street one will be off limits for, for truck traffic?
You know, this is actually an excellent question from my colleague who's about to speak to you. But the short answer is not necessarily, sir.
It's not much of a short answer.
All right, so after the, actually, I think we started this during the, the work for that, that planning initiative. And in 2017, we kind of started looking at what the access to the area should look like. You know, the recommendation from the, the planning documents that we had, you know, said that more than one access is, should be available to this, this area. And, you know, right now, the primary access crosses the, well, in, in, sorry, apologies there. The, the planned primary access from Front Street to the port would cross the rail, rail barge area. And that would, would require to be closed for up to a half an hour every time they unload and load the barge. So we're, we're looking at different ways to supplement that for twenty-four seven access. As mentioned, there's operations behind there such as helijet and, and some other, other things that, you know, are, are time-sensitive. If you got caught behind a half an hour delay, you might miss your helicopter or ferry or something like that. Until a, until a secondary access is in place, the plan is for the trestle to kind of remain as that secondary access, but just for light vehicles. And so when we started this study, eighteen options were looked at to get in and out of the area. A lot of the side streets and kind of some of the ones involved larger overpasses over the rail yard and that type of thing. Five were shortlisted, which were mainly the, the existing location of the trestle, Milton Street, Finlayson, Farquhar. And Farquhar, we looked at both an above-ground and at-grade option. Farquhar was, was favored as, as the better option, mainly because it was, was the only one that didn't involve the structure, which significantly reduced the cost. It had a bit better of a circulation, getting, connecting a couple of different neighborhoods to the area. And the, the makeup of Farquhar Street right now between the end of the road and Nickel Street is, is more of an industrial type area. So, you know, if trucks were to be using that on a regular basis, it wouldn't impact as many residential areas as, as some of the other options and even the current option of going along the trestle or, or through downtown would. The other, one thing to note about the secondary access is, you know, the, the study was developed, a concept was envisioned, but no work has been done past that to move on this option. And there'd be quite a bit of work in, working with stakeholders such as the port and the railway and, and the neighborhood to, you know, get further on on this option, not to mention the, the engineering designs and, and that type of thing. So now a bit more into the, kind of the work that we're planning for this, this coming year in 2019 to get the, the interim access and the interim walkway constructed. As Bill mentioned in his earlier presentation, the waterfront walkway, there's a portion of the project that is planned to create an interim walkway around the, the Port Drive property and along the, the access road to connect to where the Port Authorities access is. Here's similar earlier renderings of what the project will look like. The, the details have changed, but generally, it's the same idea, a couple of travel lanes. Some thought put to how bikes are going to use it, some thought put to how pedestrians are going to use it. I threw in a couple really draft engineering drawings just to give a sense of what it would look like at, at Front Street. So we're just formalizing that access, bringing it across the, the rail barge. And, and that where the, the road is the lighter shading is, is where the railway would, would cross and it would be closed during that time as they're unloading and unloading the barge. And then this is kind of continuing that up to where the existing road is. And this part of the project kind of connects it to the, the trestle itself and then pushes it forward to the access to the port. And, and really, this part of the project is, the existing road right there is kind of more of industrial use, informal, not a lot of thought to put to how different users would use it. So this would just kind of delineate it a bit better as to what needs to happen there. And yeah, as mentioned before, the trestle would, would be the, the secondary access for cars that need to get in and out. And that's the works on the plans to date. Bill was going to finish up, unless you guys had any questions on the, the works plan for next year.
Counselor Hemmings and Counselor Bonner.
Thank you very much through you two. I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Phil Stewart. I'm engineering.
Okay, Mr. Stewart. So regarding the secondary access, I feel like I do just need to make a small point to my colleagues that, yes, it is an industrial, semi kind of industrial neighborhood, but it is still a neighborhood. And I think eight large trucks through there each day will be felt. And so I just want to, I just want to share that. And secondly, could you define an interim road for me?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So we, with this project, there's kind of the idea of the interim road and it's kind of got the, the renderings up there. So if we were to build our full standard, you know, so it would be concrete sidewalks, you know, boulevards, that, that type of thing. This, we're not doing that. We're just kind of doing the bare basics just to get us from A to B. Because we're expecting in, in the relatively short term that, you know, development may happen on the property. So it's just a way to kind of not invest a lot of money into something that may be wrapped up in, you know, five to ten years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, so the expectation would be that as, if these lands were to be developed, the development community is actually responsible for building the road to its final standard.
As well as the walkway.
As well as the walkway, yeah. So this is just to get people down there now. And then if council were to choose to do something with these lands, developer would come in and they, we would give them a cross-section. They need to build, which would be a much more significant, more visually pleasing road, yeah.
Thank you. And if I may, a follow-up. Sorry, I feel like I didn't articulate that well about the eight large trucks through that neighborhood. I just want to situate it for my colleagues that that... I just want to situate it for my colleagues that that roadway is right along the site of Deverell Square Park, which is that community's largest kind of recreational area that is utilized by a lot of children. And so I'm just, I just, I think I'm just trying to make a point that it's not just an industrial zone. Those trucks will be going through a neighborhood. And I just want to be really clear about that.
Thank you. Mr. Lindsay.
Yeah, Your Worship, I just wanted to add on about this comment about interim road, because I think it's important. So it's the standard that when we say interim, whether it's the road or the walkway, it's the standard we're talking about that's of an interim nature. The location of both the road and the walkway are, in our minds, long-term locations. So those, these are, these are in keeping with the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative concept drawings, but also the One Port Drive master plan. So the interim is really about the standard, not the location.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you too. Mr. Stewart, I have some queries. I'm curious about the numbers here in trucks. It's my understanding, and cut me off if I'm wrong here, that the Port Authority is expecting 50,000 vehicles over a period of one year to come in. Does anybody know if that's the number?
Yeah, that's about right. And then we're, and then you figure there's eight, eight vehicles per truck.
Mm-hmm.
And then so many per day, so we...
Well, I just calculated that. Eight vehicles per truck means 6,250 trucks a year.
Right. That might be the ultimate buildup. I think initially, it's, it's our initial, you know, other phase in the development?
Mm-hmm.
In the first phase is around, is 12. I think as it grows, there could be more, of course.
Well, it does grow, because if we just run trucks 50 weeks a year, five days a week, that's 25 trucks a day out, and 25 trucks a day in. And the only way they can get in and out is through either going down Front Street, right in front of the courthouse and everything else, to get to the departure bay ferry, or going out nickel and, going up to get out to Nickel Street. But that's, and even if we run them 365 days a year, that's still 17 trucks in and 17 trucks out. So that's a fairly significant amount of truck traffic in our downtown area from what I'm seeing here. And I'm not sure if you can comment on it. It just seems to be that's the number that I'm calculating out. But the other problem is, who's paying for this route? Like, is, has the Nanaimo Port Authority put up any money whatsoever to get all of their vehicles off their property through our town?
No.
Is that an option?
Well, the options being contemplated, I have a small question. And just so I'm clear, is it the intention that all of the vehicles that arrive at this site will in fact be trucked off, as opposed to simply shipped to Vancouver by alternate means from the site itself?
Yes, correct. So the cars were unloaded from the car carrier, then they're processed, and then they're put onto, I can't remember the exact term they call the trucks, but yeah, the car-carrying trucks. And then those are then taken to lower mainland, the interior, Alberta, et cetera.
But those, so I think those car-carrier trucks have to go out on, are two ferries, correct?
They're looking at a number of options, I think. I won't say anymore, but there's options for them, how to get them out, yeah.
So my original point, that does mean that five, 50,000 vehicles will be on trucks leaving the Port Authority lands, not by going up by a boat from the Port Authority lands?
I think they're looking at all options right now.
Okay. Thanks.
I think it might be appropriate if staff could secure from the Port Authority just some further statistics that might satisfy some of council's concerns, or at least answer them. Mr. Rudolph, did you want to say something?
I hear him.
I guess part of the conversation is the fiscal package that supports how we're going forward. Question was around sharing the fiscal burden with the stakeholders, and I think that's a fair question. The current model has a certain fiscal set of assumptions, which Ms. Mercer could explain. Whether or not the Port Authority is part of that at this time, they're not. But is that part of a conversation with them and others that possibly could ensue? I think that's a fair question.
Thank you. Counselor Gesselbrock.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
I haven't touched you, so you've got to turn your cellphone.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
You're way down.
Time's up.
I just cut you off. Not to worry. You're back on.
Through the chair.
To Mr. Corson. I just echo, I think it would be great to have some details, like full details, on the vehicle processing facility there, just on the numbers of trucks coming in and out, and where they're going to be going, if there's going to be, yeah, ferries leaving directly from that site, or if everything's going to be routed through. I echo Counselor Hammond's concern about Farquhar Street, the South End. I know in the waterfront plan, I think there was definite recommendations not to have industrial, like trucking going through Farquhar Street. And so I think that really needs to be paid attention to. And I look forward to further discussion around the plant and how the area is set up.
Thank you.
We did have, we did present the plan to the South End Neighborhood, because we wanted to make sure they understood this. One of the concerns right now is there are existing industrial operations down there. Van Cam has a large distribution center down there, and they come up Milton Street right now. And that's a significant number of trucks a day coming up Milton. So I think the idea was if we could actually shift all the traffic further south down to Farquhar, that would actually, to Counselor Hammond's point, it would reduce the number of, there should be no trucks then going by Deverell Square Park, because they'd actually be on the Farquhar side. So that was one of the benefits we saw, we spoke to them, and they seemed to be supportive of that, yeah.
Thank you. Well, I hate to tell all of you, but if any of you are on the queue list, you're not on there now. Does anyone else have questions? Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you. You actually stole my point. I was going to say, there's lots of truck traffic down there all the time anyhow it goes down there. And I, when I was reading the plan, that they did want Farquhar, and that was based on community input. But my secondary question is, is because the Port Authority is federal, and also at the Cruz Terminal, we've got a CBSA building there. So if the MERSIC level goes up high, then obviously access is going to be restricted to those areas. So we would have to have two roads in and out, would we not?
It would certainly be our recommendation that there should be, there should be two access points to this property. I mean, at the moment, there's actually, you know, there's no real legal access at all, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is part of us, I think, taking the leadership role and trying to work with our stakeholders to solve some larger problems.
It's also like to get our buses to, like, you know, we fought to get the Cruz Terminal, and we have no access to get them in and out. Same thing with the port. We want the port to keep bringing development here, and, you know, I don't know why, if we're going to ask them to pay, we should be asking every other business to pay that's got a road into their area, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Bonner.
With all due respect, Counselor Armstrong there, we do actually require businesses, if they're doing any development, they pay for the roads, and they pay with, through taxes. Like, my concern here is if we have this much truck traffic running through our city, our downtown, is, I don't, which I don't think those roads were built for that kind of traffic, that we will be having significant expenses on our streets in the near future. All I'm asking is that this is a significant benefit to the Nanaimo Port Authority by bringing in this traffic. And I'm not opposed to, I think this is great. I just think there should be a fair sharing of the cost, both this now and in the future as this develops.
Counselor Armstrong.
And just to follow up with that, Nickel Street is actually provincial highway, so we don't pay for that. That's all done by the province. So it wouldn't have an impact, other than the little portion on Front Street or Farquhar, because it is a provincial highway, and there's, like, there's lots of trucks use this road in and out regularly. Because Duke Point, a lot of them come through town instead of doing the bypass, so.
Any further questions on this particular presentation? If not, I think the number of questions, and no criticism of staff, this is information in control of the Port Authority, that obviously, if staff can secure some of that information, it might be helpful for people.
Sorry, Your Worship, we just had one last slide.
Sorry.
Nope. Yeah, so basically, in terms of next steps, that you can expect will be us tendering the Front Street project in early 2019, and working with Ms. Mercy will clarify the funding for the walkway as part of that. The C-SPAN right-of-way transfer in April of next year, and then we'll be bringing a report to you with options for One Port Drive, so you can anticipate that probably in the spring. So we'll come back. Really, right now, you've got, there's, other than the C-SPAN transfer, you have a blank slate in terms of what you can do with One Port Drive. So we'll come back to you with options, and you can decide how you want to proceed, as well as a secondary access. Again, no work, no detailed work has been done there. This requires a partnership with the Port Authority, so working with the name of First Nation and the South End Neighborhood before we do any more work there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. And did you wish to?
As far as Mr. Corson said, part of, we'll relook at the waterfront walkway grant, depending on which way the project goes. And the rest of the Walcox access, just for your information, is funded from the Community Works Fund and the General Fund Asset Management Reserve, so.
Counselor Hammond.
Thank you. A point and a question. The point is, I want to highlight what Ms. Karnstall shared about the public consultation around this plan, and that's that initially, there was a 15-story footbuilding designed in the plan, and through public consultation, that was reduced to 12. And I think that's really important, because often, folks aren't sure where their, where their input goes. And so I just want to acknowledge that and commend that. The second piece, where does the Development Corporation come in? Because I know that was a piece around the South Downtown Waterfront Initiative, and I am admittedly rather ignorant about the development process. So is that at a later stage, or is that, should we be talking about that now? Is it off the table, et cetera? Thank you.
Yep. No, so the Development Corporation idea was put forward as part of the South Downtown Waterfront. And the idea for the Development Corporation was that an entity would oversee the development of One Port Drive, the CP lands, and the NPA lands. So it's very hard to actually implement that, because the Port Authority has jurisdiction on their own lands, and they're going to be reluctant to hand that over to a third party. And based on what's happened in the last year, now they've actually essentially tenanted the whole property. There's not much more for them to do. And CP Rail, there's limited development potential on their property. So I'm not, in order for them to develop their land, they need to do all the work we've done. So they need to be doing all the environmental work, they need to work with Southern Rail on the rail yard issues, servicing. So the only real piece, if you want to set Development Corporation up, would be, would be on the One Port Drive lands. And this will be, my staff opinion to you, is that there's only really two parcels of land you're dealing with. So one is number three on there, and number two. So you could certainly, you could set up a Development Corporation to market and sell those lands. We'd have to do some further explorations to what that is, and I'm just not too sure if it's justifiable to set up a corporation for two pieces of land, but it might be. So it's certainly something we can come back to you with.
That helps. Thank you.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. I just wanted to follow up on Counselor Hammond's question, because it's one I meant to ask earlier, so I thank her for doing that. The idea of a Development Corporation, an arms-length corporation, using expertise for this development of what I said earlier, such an important downtown asset, I think it's something that I would, I would like to have further discussion about, and I appreciate staff's comment just now, but I don't think it's something we should totally ignore. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. Obviously, this has been a topic that's been emerging in our community again, so it's good to get the information. I too would like to echo the comment of Counselor Hammond and Counselor Thorpe, and possibly, you know, throughout there, as we consider these things, that maybe a development corp for downtown in general might start to be a large enough size where it does indeed make sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. A motion to receive? Counselor Hammond, second to Counselor Gesselbrock. Any discussion? All those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Lindsay. Cannabis regulation.
Thank you, Your Worship, for something completely different. You have our report in your agenda package this afternoon, just sort of giving an overview on cannabis regulation in the city of Nanaimo. But I just had a few brief slides, I just wanted to walk through the report with you. Of course, as outlined in the report, earlier this year, the federal government adopted Bill C-45, which really allowed for the legalization of recreational cannabis in our country. From our perspective, the key aspects of that are that, when it comes to the distribution of legal cannabis, is that the federal government plays a role in the licensing of our producers, and ultimately, for product regulation. It's the federal government that does that. The province, here through what they called Bill 30, the federal government deferred many of the decisions around licensing schemes and possession restrictions to each of the provincial governments. So for example, here in B.C., the licensing scheme for cannabis stores is very similar to what we've seen and experienced with liquor stores. Also, on possession restrictions, the province of B.C. agreed that the minimum age should be 19, which most of the provinces and territories, with the exception of Alberta and Quebec, which are 18 years of age, have adopted. So 19 is sort of the common age across the country. The province also deals with possession restrictions amount, regarding the amount of cannabis that's allowed to be carried, where it can be consumed, and they have regulate, they have in their, sorry, in their bill, restrictions on, for example, you can't smoke in a park or a public place. You can't smoke in a vehicle, whether that vehicle is in movement, or whether it's parked or not, you can simply not smoke inside a vehicle. There's also possession and production restrictions for people, that you can have a maximum of four plants at a dwelling. So these are the types of restrictions that the province has done. What they have said is that, that there will be a role for local government when it comes time to look at the approval of stores, and they've confirmed that all stores will require the approval of local government. They don't say specifically how that's to be done, but that local government should have an input on where stores are appropriate. So the local government's powers, of course, under land use controls, our opportunity to look at the location, the location, site, and sizing of stores is certainly with under our purview. We have the ability to enact smoking bylaws and further restrictions beyond those I mentioned that the province has taken. And also, we have powers under the community charter, regulatory powers, under business licensing, which can look at license fees or hours of operation, security, et cetera. As outlined in the report, I guess it was early, early this year, council established the cannabis task force. And for many people, it was like, well, why did you wait so long in this process to identify a task force? And the truth is, because we still didn't know the rules that were coming out of the province. There were some ideas, but there wasn't a lot of certainty of how, what this regulatory scheme was, that we were going to be operating under. So as that became more clear, we moved forward with the task force. And I have here, there was actually 11 recommendations that came out of the task force, and the task force had representatives from many, all of the major council committees of the day, but also had other reps from, including people from the industry, representatives from First Nations, or sorry, not First Nations, sorry, from RCMP, and also representatives from the Health Authority, who sat on the task force. So I'll walk through them here quickly, but the recommendations, first of all, was that council direct staff prepare a zoning bylaw amendments to clarify that cannabis stores are separate from retail. So if you looked at your zoning bylaw prior to our most recent amendments around cannabis, we had a definition of retail, which was fairly wide open, which you could have argued would allow for retail of cannabis in an environment where it was federally legalized. So we thought it was important to amend, amend the bylaw to clarify this is something separate and distinct. The committee task force agreed with... The committee, Task Force, agreed with that and made that recommendation to council, and that the way, second item is, the way for those to be then approved would be through site-specific rezoning. And, Your Worship, this is almost exactly the approach that the community has taken, longstanding approach that we've taken around liquor stores. The Task Force also recommended that there be a set of criteria established that will help evaluate individual applications as they come forward, and that those, those criteria included a 300-meter separation from other cannabis stores, and that, that the school board be asked to provide further input on separation guidelines from schools. So, a couple of comments here worth noting. Although the province has really approached the distribution of cannabis, much like liquor stores, the one thing that they have done differently is, in liquor stores, the province has a separation requirement of one kilometer from stores, that's their requirement. And that is sort of, to some degree, dictated the amount of stores and the location that we see across our community. When it came time to do cannabis, the province specifically said, we're, we're not doing that, we're not going to have a separation. So, raise your question.
Yeah, through you, to Mr. Lindsay. We've been saying 300, yet our criteria in our rezoning criteria says 200.
Yeah, so I'll get to that in a minute, because these were the, that's a good point. These were the recommendations that came from the Task Force. My next slide talks about engagement and consultation, but we went through what we heard, and ultimately, what council finally made a decision on. But at the time, the Task Force, the recommendation was that we look at this 300-meter distance separating cannabis stores in the community, and there is a statement in, if you read the fine print of the guidelines, it says, there may be contexts or, or specific cases where you may want to look at something smaller, depending on the nature of that area. Example, downtown, maybe there may be a closer separation that you want. But the important part here is, the province really said, it's up to each local government to decide if you want cannabis stores at all, and if you do, what are the rules around them? So, Your Worship.
Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you, Ms. Lindsay. Did the Task Force consider, I know grandfathering liquor stores to also sell cannabis, considering it's both a recreational drug, similar as beer?
Yeah, they did not, and part of that is, the province is not allowing for the sale of cannabis within liquor stores, either government or private liquor stores, they have to be, they have to be separate. It could be on the same property, but they can't be within the same building. I think there's some exemptions to that for rural areas of the province, maybe, but for our community, they have, they have to be separate. So, sorry, that's a long answer, but the short answer is, no, that, that committee did not, or the Task Force did not look at, at that issue. So, Your Worship, and I think Counselor Armstrong made a good point, these, these did evolve, but these were the recommendations that came from the Task Force. So, number four, and there was much discussion, and if you've, if you've followed this topic here for the last number of years in B.C., there's been some very high business license fees that have been established by other municipalities, like Vancouver, that went ahead of this, and licensed storefronts. The recommendation out of the committee was that we are, at this point, the, for a liquor store, if you have a liquor store in the community, it's $165 business license fee. It's the same fee you pay, pay for almost any business license in the community, there's a couple of exceptions, but generally, all businesses pay $165. We are set to review our liquor control strategy in the near future, and the recommendation of the committee was, don't come in with a license fee that's different from liquor stores, but whatever you do with liquor stores, you should probably step back and do the same with cannabis stores. So, our, our recommendation there was to, in the future, make sure that's part of any review we do. Item number five, so prior to the legalization of recreational cannabis, the only place in the community that we identified any amount of legal production and processing was the Tilray facility at Duke Point. And that was, there was a site-specific amendment when Tilray came to town to allow for what was called medical marijuana growing and production on just their property. So, that was the only location in the city. There was a recommendation here, because we're, we're now moving away from just medical marijuana, that first of all, we get rid of the, get rid of what would be a very, automatically become an antiquated term, and replace it with just general cannabis production and processing, but that we also increased that use to allow it in all of our I-4 zones as of right. So, that bylaw has now been adopted. So, today, all of the properties that generally what are known as Duke Point allow for cannabis production and processing as an outright use. Likewise, there was also, the federal government set up what they call, I've heard different people call craft or micro cannabis production, which was a facility that allows up to 200 square meters of production, to allow for these smaller facilities. The recommendation of the committee was that we actually amend our I-1 and our I-2 zones to also allow those as of right, and that has been adopted now by bylaw. The committee also recommended that cannabis production not be permitted in our agricultural zones. Partly, this is the reality of, our agricultural zones are spread throughout the community, many of them are sort of seen as holding properties, that have a higher and better use under our, I shouldn't say a better use, but have a higher use under our official community plan, and ultimately contemplate some form of development. Also, given the nature of those agricultural lands, many of them border on or are surrounded by residential neighborhoods, so we didn't believe it was appropriate to put as of right in agricultural. Some of you will be aware that the Agricultural Land Commission has separate rules, which overrides ours. The reality is, here in the Niimo, we have very little of our land, which is actually in the agricultural land reserve, there are small amounts, but in the agricultural land reserve, you are allowed to grow outdoor cannabis, or you can grow cannabis within an existing greenhouse. The personal production item, item number eight, so if you heard me earlier.
Through the chair to Mr. Lindsay. Just clarification on the regulations on ALR land, was that a provincial decision to not allow indoor, like?
That is correct, so ALR land is regulated by the Provincial Agricultural Land Commission. So, that was a relatively recent decision on their part. Previously, they weren't allowing for it, and then they made the more recent decision just, I think it was just this year, actually.
So, they're not allowing, though, for like, increasing greenhouse capacity, to increase the capacity for indoor growing, it has to be within an already established greenhouse?
That's my understanding of their regulation.
Thank you.
So, item eight goes back to that earlier comment, where I said that the province established a maximum of four plants per dwelling, that you can grow out of the public eye. The recommendation of the committee was, there's no further restrictions that the municipality should look around on that topic, and we'll leave that to the province to have their regulation and to enforce. That we look at, number nine, that we look at updating our smoking bylaw specifically to make sure that the smoking of cannabis is caught within that bylaw. That bylaw has now received three readings, we're currently reviewing it within the context of some changes that are necessary to other bylaws, for example, our parks bylaw. So, in the near future, we're going to be coming back to you with a revision to that bylaw in conjunction with a new parks bylaw, but more, more on that as we come forward. The council direct staff to refer these items to the school board for input, and I'll talk about that more in a second. And then, of course, there was the 11th item, which is just review at one year following adoption. So, this is kind of a standard recommendation that we'd have anytime we're bringing in a new suite of recommendations, is that, you know, I think a lot's going to change on this file, Your Worship, just on cannabis federally, provincially, I think over the next year or two, there's going to be many rules as, as we get into things like edibles and consumption lounges and all of that, and I think there's going to be a need to constantly be reviewing our bylaws to make sure that they reflect best practices. So, through, through the public engagement sessions, number of items that we heard on, one was the distance from schools. So, early on, we had a draft in our criteria of 150-meter separation, there should be 150 meters separating schools from cannabis stores. Of interest, that's the same number that's currently in our liquor store rezoning criteria, so if you come forward now, it's 150 meters for liquor stores. Through that process, we did get.
Can I just ask a question? That 200 meters, how long has that been in place?
So, the 200 meters was endorsed by council just late this summer, late this summer. So, the 150 meters we had for liquor stores, the first draft of the guidelines recommended 150 for cannabis stores. We went through this public process, and we received input from others, including the school board. The school board actually recommended that it be 300 meters. Council weighed that at the end of the day, and they recommended that in the criteria, it actually be put at 200 meters, so that's the criteria. But what's worth, I should have emphasized this earlier, but what's worth noting is, these are simply rezoning criteria, these are not bylaws, these are guidelines to help us evaluate applications as, as they come forward.
And what were the guidelines before that for private liquor stores, or liquor stores in schools?
They were 150, and they continue to be 150 meters.
And when I say 150, it was 150 for years, in other words?
It's been probably for the last decade, I guess, since, since the province opened the moratorium on, on liquor stores, which I can, probably eight to 10 years ago now. But where, where we settled on, or where council settled on, I should say, is 200 square meters. There was also, in the earlier draft of the guidelines, a suggestion that you should not have cannabis stores in close proximity to liquor stores. After the engagement and consultation, council took out that criteria. But they also included new criteria requiring a 200-meter notification process around individual rezonings. The other motion, they count, sorry.
Pardon me, keeping interrupting you.
No, that's fine.
You've got an interesting presentation. Well, it stimulates conversation, anyway.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Lindsay. So, is the 200 meters as the crow flies, or on the sidewalk?
Yeah, Your Worship, that's a good question. It's 200 meters, but because we, we did run into some issues around this with the school board, or, sorry, with the liquor stores, there's always some question of how you measure that. So, the guidelines, if you look at them, they have some certainty about you measure from the door to the edge of the property. We ran into problems in the past about, well, is it from the edge of the property to the property, is it from the door to the school? So, we tried to provide some clarity, again, in the guidelines, but it is as the crow flies from, from those two points.
Thank you. Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, through you to Mr. Lindsay. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place for this question, but on page three of the report, it says that staff are currently completing a review of the applications, including formal referrals to agencies listing the school board as one. Now, we've set a criteria of 200 meters from schools, so is this a courtesy referral? What are we looking for in, in getting their input there?
Yeah, so each of the applications, and I'll talk about those in a second, but each of the applications will be referred to those parties, including the school board. So, keep in mind, the 200-meter separation was council's recommendation at the time, the school board was recommending 300. Each of those applications will be sent to the school board, they'll review them, they may come back with a higher, with a different recommendation. They, there's nothing binding them to say, well, just because the store is greater than 200 square meters, doesn't necessarily mean that they'll support it. I think they'll review each of them and provide their, their own recommendations. And I think a lot of that will have to do with, obviously, the context of, it might be closer or further away, but is there a major barrier separating the school? Is it on a direct, you know, path to the school? I think all of those things I'm anticipating the school board will look at when they make recommendations on, on each of the, each of the applications.
Thank you. Follow-up, if I may? The, the decision still belongs with the city ultimately, though?
Absolutely. The rezoning applications ultimately will be the decision of council on, on making those applications go forward. And in order for anybody to open a store, they need, they need the city's approval through the province, the province can be looking to us for approval, and the way that's being set up is through rezoning. So, council, it'll be like any other application process, we come forward with a report, it'll go to public hearing, ultimately, council will have to make a decision on, on those applications. And so, Your Worship, the other thing I should have mentioned under A is, in the earlier draft, there was a 300-meter separation from stores, between stores, and council did decrease that to 200 square meters after engagement. So, really, the sort of 200-square meter, meter, or, sorry, 200-meter number is the standard of measure for all of these things in, in our guidelines today.
Counselor, Counselor Martin.
I'm not sure if I want to ask this now, or is there more to the presentation, because it said about directing staff, but did staff actually forward the zoning bylaw amendment? Did we do it?
So, the guidelines under A have been amended and changed, as outlined here, and are attached to your report, I think is a attachment one, I think, in your, in your report. The second part is one we have not done yet, item B, and there was a recommendation at, at that time, that staff bring forward a zoning bylaw amendment to permit cannabis production and processing outright in the light industrial zones. So, if you recall, I said, the recommendation of the Task Force was to allow it outright in our heavy industrial zones in Duke Point, and also to allow the micro or craft production facilities in our light industrial zones, but we did not take that step and say, as of right, allow for large-scale production and processing in all light industrial zones. Recommendation from the council was to bring that amendment bylaw back, so we still need to do that, we need to come back to you with a report. What I, what I can tell you now is, that, that's not a recommendation that staff would support. Our, our, many of our lighter industrial areas came to us from pre, a time of pre-amalgamation, and many of them are in close proximity, or if not surrounded by residential. We had an earlier discussion today about the conflicts that can exist between the two. We really think it's, it's a case-by-case basis that you'd want to review production of cannabis, anything larger than the craft or micro. It's not that someone cannot apply, we're just not suggesting, we weren't suggesting, and we wouldn't support an as-of-right allotment in all of our light industrial zones.
If I may follow up, that, then, just briefly, when we were talking about that the applications that are coming forward are actually going to the school district for their review, are these the existing applications that we have before us?
Yeah, so there's, as of today, there's 11 applications, I expect we may get more for, these are for the cannabis stores, for cannabis retail stores. So, those referrals are being made as they come in to various parties, including the school board. This is a common approach we do with any rezoning application. Staff then collect all of that input we receive from our, from our partners, and then we share that with council when we bring forward the report. So, I'm expecting on each of these reports, on each store that comes forward, will be staff recommendation, but within the report, we will share with you what the school board's position is on each of those items. At the end of the day, council will have to weigh that in your, in your final decision.
Okay, so, if I may, with another follow-up, because we do, or we do have a lot of applications before us, from the, some of these from establishments that were open prior to cannabis becoming legal, and I'm wondering what the timelines are, because cannabis retail is a business within our city that does employ people, and I'm wondering what the timelines are, or how long this is going to last, because I've heard from some that if it takes too long, they won't even be able to last or reopen.
So, in terms of the timeline, I expect the first applications you'll see before you are probably in January or early February of this year, so I imagine on your public hearing in February and March, you're probably going to be taking input on, on those applications. So, I see end of, end of quarter one, I think there'll be some recommendations from council on some of these applications. Now, I would say on the, on the other, on that list, you do have some that were operating before, you have some that are new, obviously, on that, on that list, I don't know if they're identified or not, but three of those are actually government, government stores that are being proposed, obviously, they didn't operate before. Anybody operating prior to today, or anybody operating now, these are illegal storefronts, they were never legalized.
Right.
So, there's no grandfathering clause.
No.
And we have not weighed them, weighed whether they were there or not in the evaluation. The province has been pretty clear that they will, and what they've said is, through the minister, is that if you want to be seriously considered for a permanent license, you better not be continuing to sell illegally until your license is, is granted. But on the, on the, and I think this brings up a point on the ability to access both medical and recreational cannabis. Certainly, the medical system is still in place, you can still mail order for, for medical cannabis. People who want to access recreational cannabis can do so through the province, they have a website set up, and they, they do sell. So, people, even in a certain term period, do have access to both recreational and, and medical cannabis.
I just don't prefer to buy my wine online, and I won't want to buy my weed online either, so. Personal opinion?
So, Your Worship, that's the final slide I have here, but really, in terms of the next steps we'll be bringing forward, those individual rezoning applications, I, as I mentioned, we'll be, also be bringing forward, because it was a council motion, and we'll be bringing forward for your direction, a bylaw amendment to allow for cannabis production outright in our light industrial zones. And again, at, at that time, staff will be outlining our reasons for why we would not recommend that you adopt that bylaw, but we will bring it forward. And the final is the ultimate adoption, as I spoke to earlier, of our smoking bylaw. We, we want to do some amendments to it at third reading to make sure it, it's in compliance with our other, other bylaws and the, and the most current regulations coming from the province, but I expect we'll have that back to you in likely January. That's the end of my presentation, Your Worship.
Counselor Hammond.
Thank you very much. Through you to Mr. Lindsay, thank you, this was really informative on, obviously, an emergent issue. A couple things, the 200 meters between stores, I read in the report that that's going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, for example, in the downtown, where we have a higher density of population. The reason I ask is I want to avoid, you know, people feeling like they need to get their name in first, that kind of competitive environment.
Yep, and we, there, there is specific language in the original guidelines and in the adopted guidelines, that both speak to the fact that there may be contexts where you want something closer. And really, when we wrote that, we were thinking about the downtown specifically.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, I think what's really important to remember is, the 200 But at the end of the day, I think what's really important to remember is, the 200 meters is simply a guideline. It's not a bylaw, and council can weigh any of those criteria in the guidelines on these individual applications.
Okay. Thank you for that. And secondly, during the public hearing, I believe it was three or four months ago, there seemed to be a lot of worry from folks who are already operating micro productions in areas that aren't I-2 or I-4. I might have those wrong, but they're operating in zones which currently don't allow it. And there was discussion from those folks who reasonably bring in jobs and just support our economy. Is there an opportunity to grandfather those operations that are already in existence? And, yeah?
So the only licensed and has a city of Nynamal business license, and to my knowledge, federally licensed, is Tilray. So there's nothing to grandfather, but I think that bullet two here, and the recommendation that came from council at that time, was in a response to the delegations that you speak to, was there's people that were concerned about their ability to expand and grow within the light industrial zones. From staff's perspective, there may very well be locations in our light industrial zones where that's appropriate, but we think it should be evaluated site by site and not just allowed in all zones across the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Armstrong.
Just for Ms. Hemmings, you're referring to a processing plant. That was a processor that was coming forward. It wasn't a grow-up, it was a processor. It's a different term, and there's different rules federally on that.
Was it operating locally?
No, they didn't have a business license that we could find unless it was under a different name. And so there's a lot of issues, and he was told that he could come back and make an application that rezoned to follow it, like anybody can. But I just, I was just going to say, for councils, I've attended a lot of the things at UBCM, read a lot, and what we're doing here is considered best practice. They strongly encourage us not to put anything into bylaws, because then it's in stone. And as a matter of fact, they actually say, the lawyers that all spoke, said you shouldn't even have distances in, because then it creates, is it from this door to that door? It creates a whole bunch of issues, so. And then just my last point, too. I think we have to change our guidelines, because it says it must be reviewed by community vitality, RCMP, and community planning and development committees. Well, we don't have committees right now, so I don't know if we want to address that later, but that would have to be removed.
Your Worship, I think in the interim, for all of our processes that would normally involve referrals to committee, we're simply not, we're not holding up applications. We'll bring it to council without recommendations from those committees. But I think as council makes future decisions on your committee structure and how you want to do that, these guidelines will need to be amended along the way, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Mr. Lindsay. I'm going back to this liquor store and cannabis store as being the same thing, as far as I'm concerned. Do liquor distilleries, are they site-specific in their zoning?
No, we allow for food and beverage processing in many of our industrial zones, so it's an as-of-right use. The sale of liquor, so liquor stores, whether they're government or private, we deal with site-specific on each property. So it's site-specific for, so it's very similar, not the production, but for the retail of it, yes.
And the reason I was asking regarding changing the zoning so that a liquor store's zoning would be able to sell cannabis as well, is that if that were the case, then the liquor store could just clear out all their liquor and start selling cannabis tomorrow, because it would be allowable under their site-specific zoning. I consider both of these products to be exactly the same, it's just a different way of getting high, basically. So my question here is then, because we're allowing, the province said they allow a wall to be built down the middle of a store and a common lobby, and that would then be, that would be fine, we could be, if we went and said a liquor store license zoning is good enough to sell cannabis, then a liquor store could choose at that time to say, okay, I'm going to close for renovations, and a month later, they're up and running. That's the reason I'm thinking this would be probably a good way of looking at it. And I guess the question is to staff, if we wanted to change that, how would we go about doing that?
Well, I think it would be an amendment to the zoning bylaw, so it would be adding, if I understand what you're saying, it would be as-of-right, you're automatically allowing cannabis stores on all the properties in the community that currently allow for liquor stores. It would be a motion of council. Staff would draft the appropriate amendment bylaw. It would come forward and go through the normal process of council readings and public hearing, certainly under, it's different than the approach that the task force recommended and where we are today, but it is an approach council could elect to take.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Armstrong.
Just to clarify on that point as well, they still, they wouldn't be able to do that, because they still have to go through the province for the final license, and the province may come back and say no. So it doesn't matter what we say, yes, the province could still say no. So they can't just automatically change it, they have to apply to the province for the license.
Anyone further? Mr. Lindsay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate this. Motion to receive. So moved. Counselor Brown, Counselor Bonner seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Rudolph, Committee of the Whole Workshops, 2019.
Worship, I was just wondering if you wanted a brief break between this and the next, or just keep going?
I'm such a slave driver, maybe we should.
Okay. Just 10 minutes?
10 minutes? 10-minute break? Thank you.
There'll be a new decorum statement read out at the start of each meeting to ensure proper decorum is taking place and to assist the chair in his duties. So the proper rules of order and the decorum will be as follows. There will be only one speaker at a time that will have the floor as directed by the chair of the meeting. There will be no interruptions or call-out comments while another person has the floor. Anyone speaking out without having been acknowledged by the chair will be found out of order. If that person does not refrain from speaking without having been acknowledged by the chair, then he or she will be required to leave. For the members of the public speaking, the comments need to be respectful and constructive. Discrimatory or defamatory comments, or comments that are in the nature of harassment, will not be tolerated, and anyone engaging in such communications will be found out of order. Some examples of behavior that won't be tolerated at a council meeting are as follows. One, harassment. In terms of comments about city employees, employees of the city of Nynamal have a right not to be subjected to discriminatory or defamatory comments or personal attacks against their competency or character. All speakers must refrain from such comments about identifiable staff. Comments should be limited to issues regarding the city's policies or operations. Number two, Section 7 of the Human Rights Code prohibits a discriminatory publication because of race, color, ancestry, place of origin, religion, marital status, family status, physical or mental disability, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, or age. Discrimatory comments will not be tolerated. Number three, defamation is publication about a person that tends to hurt that person's reputation. Defamatory comments will not be tolerated. Please stick to known facts and keep the dialogue respectful and constructive.
Are you tired of dragging the garbage out? They just don't make them like they used to. It's a saying that doesn't really apply to garbage cans. Yes, young man, you seem ready for a new garbage and recycling experience. Take a look at the new green, blue, and black carts right behind you. Yes, exactly. Oh, I see your confusion. I can fix it. Go ahead, give them a try. Pretty easy to roll, right? Did you know that a set of these carts will be delivered to every house in Nynamal as a part of the new sort, toss, roll program? It's designed to make it easy for you to sort your waste, toss it into the correct cart, and roll it to the curb.
Three carts will be assigned to your home, but the city actually owns them. This way, the city will maintain responsibility for repairing and replacing the carts when it's needed.
Wow, you really are happy about this. There are a few things you need to know before you start wheeling your carts to the curb. Are you ready? Great, let's get ready to sort, toss, roll.
Yeah!
Did you think that this was a silent video? Well, now that you've found your voice, why don't you narrate this next bit?
The new sort, toss, roll automated curbside collection program is coming to Nynamal in two phases. Phase one is being rolled out to central Nynamal now. Sort, toss, roll will come to the rest of Nynamal in the summer of 2018. Carts will be delivered and placed at the end of your driveway, yard, or curbside. This is how you should place your carts on collection days. An information package will be left for you, further introducing you to the new program.
With information spanning from instructions on how to place your cart on different types of streets, to options for cart upsizing, or details on what goes into each cart.
Wow, you really know your stuff. Tell me, why are there three colors of carts?
Well, this one is for organics, this one is for garbage, and this blue one over here is for any recyclables.
Very good. Now, what goes into the blue recycling cart?
Cardboard, plastic containers, milk jugs, cans, or anything that used to go into the yellow recycling bags.
Now, David, what goes into the green cart?
The green cart is for your organics. Any compostable food, pizza boxes, or napkins. Anything that used to go into the old organics bin.
And?
And what?
I'll give you a hint.
Yard clippings.
Yes, the new green cart has plenty of room for grass and weeds. Now, what about the black cart?
Easy, that one is for garbage. Any waste that can't be composted or recycled. But what if the carts aren't big enough?
Well, the city of Nynamal has an exchange program in place. Homes that have more demand for recycling and household waste can upsize their carts. That reminds me, anyone that has questions about the sort, toss, roll program can call the hotline or visit our webpage.
The standard 240-liter blue recycling cart can hold three times the amount of recyclables as your yellow bag, and it won't blow away in the wind. The 120-liter green cart can hold three times as much as your old green bin, and the 120-liter black bin is about the size of one and a half garbage bags. And now, you won't even need to buy those black garbage bags.
Are you going to get that?
I probably should. Take over for a bit, will you?
Okay.
Excellent. Thanks.
Hang on. Let's try this. Sort, toss, roll is a new way of doing away with waste. New trucks are a big part of the program and come equipped with an automated arm to lift, dump, and replace the carts on collection day. The trucks are efficient. Each truck has two compartments and can pick up both your weekly organics and your recycling or garbage. They are also fueled by compressed natural gas, so they are green, too, and the trucks are safe. Our waste collectors no longer need to lift the cans manually. This means far less injuries on the job and happier workers. The new trucks are awesome. The arms can reach out up to 10 feet to pick up the carts. It is important you place them properly on collection day, though, to make sure that your waste and recycling can be picked up. How you place your carts depends largely on the type of street your home is on. If your street looks like this, with a sidewalk divided and set in from the curb, place your carts like this. If your street looks like this, with a sidewalk and a curb as one, place your carts like this. If your street doesn't have a sidewalk or curb, place your carts like this at the end of your driveway. And finally, if you have a curbed sidewalk but can't place your carts behind the sidewalk because of a wall, ditch, or fence, place your carts like this in front of the curb. Always remember to place your carts one meter apart to allow room for the automated arm, and point the arrow on your cart lens towards the street. In the occasional neighborhood, there are other factors that may affect how you can place your carts, such as street parking or steep hills. The city of Nynamal will find a collection solution for every situation. It may not look like it, but there's technology in the carts. Each cart has a digital ID tag, which tells the truck which house it belongs to and whether it's the recycling, organics, or waste cart, so that it gets dumped to the right compartment to pick up.
Contamination happens when things that can't get recycled get tossed into the blue cart. Styrofoam, plastic bags, and glass can't be accepted at the curb. The automated sorting machine at the recycling facility cannot process them. This means contaminated loads of recycling end up being sent to landfill. So do your part and recycle smart.
Sort, toss, roll, it's easy, efficient, green, clean, and safe.
I was going to say that.
Go ahead, then.
It's easy, efficient, green, clean, and safe.
That about sums it up.
David, time for dinner.
Don't worry, we've covered a lot today, and if people want to learn more about sort, toss, roll...
Call the hotline, 250-756-5390. Come on, David. I've got to go.
What was that number again?
250-756-5390.
If we can call the meeting back to order, please, everyone? Mr. Rudolph, and thank you for your suggestion of a recess. I think council appreciates your sensitivity, which I obviously lack.
Just fresher for this next section. So, Your Worship, this is an opportunity to do some pre-planning for 2019, and firstly, I want to thank council for the due diligence that you've had over the past while. Seems like you've put in about six months' worth of work in two months, or one month, and that was all after you spent a lot of time and energy getting through the election process. So, you know, working through items is an important piece of this, and it's not all about presentations, and so we're bringing forward just some ideas for topics and seeking, I guess, a bit... bit of direction from council on your priorities, the format for doing this kind of work as we roll through the new year. We want to hit the ground running January, and it'll come quickly. So, there's a few thoughts in terms of process that I'd like to put on the table, but this really needs to be more of a conversation today. And one of the things that you'll see about this room is it doesn't really lend itself for conversations. It lends itself for presentations. So, one of the suggestions is that we have these types of workshops in a location and a format that actually lends itself for workshops. So, it's the, at the New City Hall or the SARC building is a perfect room, and that's the facility that was designed for that purpose, where you could sit around the table and actually have a workshop and start to share and exchange views and so forth. Here is much more difficult. So, that's one part of this. The second part is, this is a special meeting, and we're suggesting that you probably would benefit from having the opportunity of regularly scheduled special meetings into the new year and as long as you need them. Our suggestion is you consider this as a Monday afternoon fixture in your calendars, open to discussion around that, where we could build a committee of the whole agenda or governance and priorities committee or something like that. On the scheduled Mondays for Committee of the Whole, and in this case, in addition to regular council meetings when those opportunities arise. So, that's, that's one option we're suggesting, and it lends itself to a lot more working environment, but this room doesn't really work that well for that. So, location would be suggested at the SARC. Second thing is that we're suggesting that you, if it's acceptable to you for us to have the opportunity to schedule you on an as-required basis for Monday afternoons for this workshop format and discussion, and that would still leave us for the evening delegations, late afternoon, and that type of thing. So, there's still some work that needs to be done in terms of our scheduling, our format, and all that type of thing, and that's actually one of the topics on the list. So, those are, those are concepts that I'd like to ask your indulgence on today, so we could start to schedule meetings for January. We've already identified in the calendar three potential dates for Committee of the Whole workshops, the 7th, the 14th, and the 28th. And the 7th comes quickly, and that would be the first, and we could probably do like we did today, have a number of topics or more than one, depending on the magnitude of it. So, that's, that's on there. We're looking for a little bit of direction in terms of priorities. Not that we have to scribe this out specifically today, but to get a sense from council of your, of your priorities. We can't do it all at once. Some things are tied to things that are coming on. For example, the OCP review, I was asking Mr. Lindsay earlier about when he expects to be coming to council with that, and it's probably February, March, and that would be in advance of the whole launch of that process. There's an example, same with the Parks Recreation Plan. So, there's, there's strategies, there's, there's those types of things. Then there's a whole longer list of governance issues that are perhaps where we're seeking a little bit more direction from council at this time, so we could start to program that into the work plan, and the list is there. There are a couple of dates that are somewhat fixed at this stage. One is a strategic planning session for January, this is over at Above Committee of the Whole, for January 18th. The recommendation is that there would be a second date in February with the consultant. That's probably a problem day, the way it's been fixed, because it's a Tuesday, and I think we should stay away from Tuesdays, given the RDN conflict, so we'd have to reschedule that. That's just the council part of that. If there's more attached to that process, public input, that type of thing, that would have to be built on top of that. Also, I've lined up the Economic Development Consultant, actually the Executive Director of BC Economic Development, to come and spend time with you. He has been here before, I'm told, twice with previous councils, so for some, maybe a familiar face, but for all of us in the province, a very familiar face on the subject of economic development. What is it? What are your options for different formats and that types of things? So, that'll all be facilitated through a day's discussion on the 28th. Basically, I had to book him so, so that we had some time there. Tentative other date, working with the Finance Department, we had quite a robust, preliminary robust discussion on finances through the budget process. We're targeting March 11th as a full-day workshop on reserves, fees, and charges and all that type of thing, and it'll probably be a multi-step exercise with council heading into next year's budget. There'll be lots, there'll be year-end, there's a lot of meetings that'll end up happening around budget, so that, that's another date. There's an alignment problem here with, it says council committee's ongoing, that's actually policy review. The committee is a discussion unto itself that may be ongoing, but I suspect it'll be, roll up our sleeves, figure out what, what council's looking for on that, and then implement it sometime. So, I've also listed strategic relationships and partnerships. Some of those, you're getting a sense possibly through our discussions already that we've got business relationships with entities, and some of that may have to be in closed environments, not, there's an open, but for the privacy of the partners that we're actually dealing with and so on, we have to respect that, and so there'll be parts of that would be closed and part of it would be open. But the premise is almost all of this needs to be open unless there's a reason to go closed, and I think that's a philosophy that you would accept. There's two more interesting topics that I'll just put on the table. One is the council outstanding resolutions, both, well, in the open environment. There's, it's been mentioned by several counselors that, what about all those, you know, what are those outstanding resolutions and what happened to them? Well, I think we need to unpack that with you and go through that. Similarly, with the core review, I think staff would be as anxious as you are to deal with it one way or the other and then know where we stand. So, that's, that's, that's certainly there, and we're, we will be prepared to do that. So, there's a whole pile of other topics here. Not that we have to wordsmith this and find all the solutions today, it's just give a, get a general sense of what your collective priorities are and that we would work it into the system, and the method that I'm suggesting is Monday afternoons at the conference or the boardroom at the SARC building, and we would start to work our way through the issues one at a time or in bunches as we can, like today. And it's more than just presentations, it's discourse. So, I, I know you're probably getting up to here with presentations, that's part of it, but then there's the dialogue and then decisions and directions and so forth. So, that's it. I was just putting it on the table and asked for any feedback or direction, and I believe that our scheduled close of this phase of today's meetings was four o'clock, but we do have extra time if you, if you wanted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rudolph. I now have five counselors on, but I, I want to say something right at the start, that I take no credit for this suggestion, but certainly with my encouragement, Mr. Rudolph brought it forward. I'll take responsibility if, if the concept upsets council, but I just must say that my, my general view is, this is, and I say this publicly and compliment you all, this is a hard-working group. People read the material. I think people are very anxious to learn about the intricacies of how this city operates and who does what and what our responsibilities are, and I'm looking forward to the comments of council, but I must say that I'm enthusiastic supporter of this for as long as is necessary, until this council can all look around the table and say, you know what, we can do everything without that kind of discussion or discourse, but I think it's a hugely important, not exercise, but, but an opportunity for all of us. So, having said all that, Counselor Thorpe, lead us off.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you, and thank you to the thought you've put into this and also to Mr. Rudolph, and I, I appreciate that. And I agree personally that the site for these workshops, I think, would be more suited at the, at the SARC, where we can sit around a table, slightly more informal atmosphere. The Rispin Room, I think, is a little too confining, but I think SARC would be a good place. My question, though, is if one of those workshops was then to be followed with a regular Committee of the Whole meeting, would we come down here for the regular Committee of the Whole?
That would be the proposal, is that we would transition then to come here for the delegations and the other business of the Committee of the Whole. I mean, this is a bit of a work in progress, but that would be the suggestion, yes, move the Whole. We don't have to do that, but my, I was anticipating that that's where you'd want to have that part of your meeting down here, and we are set up to have delegations here.
Thank you. We did, we did briefly experiment with having Committee of the Whole meetings at the SARC site, and I don't feel that it worked very well, so, so I would agree with that proposal. My other question would be in terms of timing. If we had a workshop during a Monday afternoon from 1 till 4, and there was a regular council meeting, would we, would we then have a break between 4 and 7? Is that the intent?
I think there's some options around scheduling of meetings. If you would like a break between the afternoon meeting and the 7 o'clock, there's, it's a possibility that you could reschedule your closed meetings to the afternoons as well. I can share that in the Abbotsford, that's what we did. There was afternoon meetings for closed and Committee of the Whole, and then there was a break, and then you came for your 7 o'clock council meeting. And the, there were benefits to that in terms of, you know, meal planning and that type of thing that were helpful, but it's, that's just one, yeah, there is, there is, we'd have to make this logistically work.
Thank you, and I appreciate these are details that we can work out.
Yeah.
Just seems to me having a three-hour gap is a little pointless. We could put it to, to good use, perhaps, so.
Yeah, okay.
That's great, thank you very much.
Counselor Marvin.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for this work. I, I think this is very important, and I love that it's being proposed for Monday, since that's my day off. That's, I don't mind working nine till midnight. The only thing I was going to suggest, just as, because January's right around the corner, is in all due respect to the rest of the council, I think code of conduct and respectful workplace is perhaps something we can take off our agenda right now and get the best bang for our buck for our time, and I would like to suggest moving council committees to January 7th, so.
Completely up to you.
I'm looking around the table, and am I seeing any?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion? I don't know if we do, because it's a draft.
I, I don't think we need a motion.
A direction.
Perhaps you'll hear some further discussion from some counselors who may take...
If, if it was just general consensus, then we could start to build it. If there were specific asks around, okay, what are we actually doing at that meeting? Again, it's just getting it on the table. We would, just thinking off the top of my head, Your Worship, we'd want to come in with, this is our current committee structure, this is what we've had in the past, this is some, some basic things in that could help structure a basis to move forward. We're always starting from somewhere else, so we'll give you a set of information, but we wouldn't necessarily be coming to you with proposals for the 7th. It would just be blue-skying it a bit, if that's okay.
Perhaps background information on...
Yeah, just background. Whatever we could garner, we would bring, and then it's a blue-skyed discussion.
And if I may suggest, the committees that existed pre the new committees that were brought in under this council, and then, then we would be able to do a comparison.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you. I concur. I don't think we need session one there on the code of conduct, respectful workplace. I think Mr. Cuff covered a lot of that off. I would like to see us focus on the waterfront walkway and Port Drive sooner than later for the simple fact that we do have dollars on the line if we don't make some decisions based on the gas grant money, so that would be a concern I have. And the second thing that I heard a lot from a lot of people, and I think others, that is the development approval processes. So, I think those would be, to me, those are things that really affect the community more than some of these other things right away. So, those would be two that I, and I'm totally in favor of working whatever on Mondays, doesn't matter what time. I think it's good to already book that day, so 100% in favor of whatever. I'm okay with one, I'm okay with three, whatever. Don't work, so it's a lot easier.
May I ask a clarification on the One Port Drive comment? I think the indication was that we would be coming back in February with a follow-up to, well, actually, that was on the waterfront walkway. That was February. So, what the last slide did indicate is that staff, unless otherwise directed, would be proceeding to the RFP stage for the roadworks that are taking place unless council feels otherwise. That was on the last slide for that piece of the work. So, if, there's more work that needs to be done on the master planning piece of it, and, but, and there was the walkway part of the right away as well, so I'm not sure if, if we're clear on that.
The only, the only concern I have, and I think staff will probably address it, is, like, I do have some concerns, like you heard about the boat base and all that, however, I'm also very cognizant of the fact we've got a lot of money on the table from the gas tax credit, and I don't want to lose that if, if it's something that, you know, the majority of council wants to proceed with or whatever. So, I think it's really important to have that discussion around that, like, obviously we can wait till February if, if you think that's, wait till staff comes back. I'm just worried about, like, if we get into lengthy discussions and we want more reports back, because we're concerned about, like, we talked about the green shores, right, like all of that kind of stuff, like, that takes a lot to absorb. I know when I first learned about it, I spent a lot of time with the urban planner explaining it to me, and then an environmental person, so that I could really understand and grasp the concept. So, I'm just thinking in those terms, because we're talking about a 43 million project. Yes, we are breaking it down into groupings, but, you know, if we're going to do our groupings, I think they need to make sense. You don't want to start something and then have a 10 miles or 10, you know, whatever in between where there's nothing, so. That's just a priority for me, but that's just me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hemmings.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Rudolph, I want to thank you for this. I, I think this is a comprehensive list of all of the things that have come up over the last five or six weeks, and as, you know, as you say, that we've been working hard, staff has also been working really hard, so I really appreciate this. I would suggest in addition to the strategic studies section that we include something on the creative plan for, cultural plan for Creative Nanaimo, which is due to expire in a year, and which we know arts and culture, you know, is something that we want to pay attention to. As to your space, whether we do this here at the SARC, I fully support doing it at the SARC. One of the things that I have struggled with as a new counselor is that this setting, while great for council meetings, it doesn't really lend itself to debate and engagement with each other. And, and for me, that's kind of the meat of where we get the work done, so I would support that. The Monday afternoon is, is fine. I would do my best to, oh, sorry, to Counselor Martman's, Counselor Martman's point about the code of conduct, I agree that we've done a bit of work on this, and I would also agree that Mr. Cuff gave us a pretty in-depth session on it. However, I think that this piece is actually really important to the public, so I'm not saying yay or nay, I'm just saying this is something we want to be aware of.
Some councils, not all, through the chair, have been bringing forward code of conduct documents for the public acknowledgement of the importance of it, and that we do, we've been collecting some of those, and we do have some of that. I know that it was identified earlier on to me that that might be an area that you may, you may want to just clarify on the governance side how you're approaching things. So, it's not something that's hard to do, but there are other issues attached that, like respectful workplace whistleblower, and there's, there's policies that need to be reviewed with council at, at the appropriate time. I'm not saying it's necessarily the first thing, and I believe council's now saying not, that's not necessarily something that you need to do right away, because there's a lot of actually hard work, and if you're demonstrating a great deal of respectful workplace by just the way you're conducting yourselves through the chair and your demeanor is really quite impressive, so it's not something that we're sensing is urgent, but it's something you may want to have as a piece of your work plan accomplished. So, it's very transparent and clear.
Okay, so, thank you for that. I would support pushing a discussion of the committees and the Committee of the Whole in particular to, to a broader conversation in January, because the Committee of the Whole, from my understanding, is really where we get, it's where the debate happens, which is where we kind of make our decisions and that sort of thing. I have a, a potential motion brewing around this. I was really inspired by Mr. Cuff's session around how do you actually get the best governance structure? And right now, I don't feel like we've got it, and I don't think that's anyone's fault, it's just that we probably could be, we could tighten it a little bit.
Yep.
And a thorough discussion of how the Committee of the Whole operates, what, what, kind of how it advances our agenda, how delegations come to us, as well as committees, because that really is kind of the foundation of community engagement. So, yeah, that would be my preference to begin there, and, and I'll keep thinking about this motion and see if it's maybe appropriate to serve tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Turley.
Yes, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Rudolph, mine is probably more of a personal content, comment, and you can take it whichever way you like, but I'm going to be away from January the 6th to, to the 20th, so my question is, are, are the contents of these meetings going to be made in a paper or electronic form, so I can, I'm not going to be looking at them while I'm sitting on the beach, but when I get back.
We could certainly make sure the information, background materials are available. I think if you're asking whether you're going to be able to stream... I think if you're asking whether you're going to be able to stream into that, I'm not sure.
No, I'm not going to. I don't want anybody seeing me in a bathing suit.
Yeah, we'll make sure that all that's available. And again, since these are public meetings, they will all be on our public formats for the public who wants to sit there and listen, that they're public, unless there's a reason to go close. It's an important principle around this that's resonating, but it's not necessarily going to be streaming in this, like, in this room. And we do have some challenges with our technology in the different rooms, and our microphones and so forth, but that's, yeah, so it'll be posted.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Your Worship. I too support the move to the SARC building. I think it's, for one main reason is I think it's important that we have a table where we feel like we can roll up our sleeves and actually debate and do work. Which brings me to my second point, and I think building on Counselor Hemmings is, I too was very inspired by Mr. Cuff's comment. And as much as I would love to review committees, I'm hoping we can go deeper than that and actually review governance itself, and how we conduct that business, and how we have those debates. Because I think we've been presented, maybe through circumstances that we're not entirely happy with, but with a wonderful opportunity to reimagine what something like a cow looks like or similar. And if we could maybe be a little more cutting-edge and leading-edge and actually debate, invite guests, allow the public to see how decisions are made through robust discussion and debate, I think there could be something quite magical there, and it doesn't necessarily need old committee structures, or, and sometimes it might need committees, but if we could have a forum for that sort of debate, you know, maybe it's called a cow workshop, maybe as Mr. Cuff indicated, you know, to remove the baggage of the cow name, it's called the GPC or whatever. That would be real cool. With that said, so I would support that, having that conversation earlier on. The other one that I do think is a priority is, in particular, building off the mayor's comments, that, you know, we do seem to be a group that is sort of deep diving into things, and also probably generating work, and cognizant of the staff capacity. There is the outstanding items of the council resolutions in the core review. And, you know, that might not be a fun item to get into, but it might also free up staff time or some departmental plans that are based on those two items. So I would just put that out there for council's consideration, that it might be not the most exciting thing, but a rather pragmatic item to address sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Counselor Gesselberg.
Through the chair to Mr. Rudolph. I echo what many of my fellow council members say about, excited about this structure of moving up to the SARC building for more roll-up-your-sleeves discussion. I too like the comments by Mr. Cuff, and I think that we should just move and create a governance and priorities committee, and that kind of be the seed committee to start building out what we need to build out. I apologize for calling it the GPD for such a long time, but it's actually the GPC. But I think that that would be an important first move for us to do, to set a new tone, and as Counselor Brown mentioned, be able to build from there a governance structure that makes sense and really ties community engagement and proper process into the structure. And, yeah, that's me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Your Worship. I totally disagree with everybody. Respectfully, though. No, thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I think a discussion about our council committee format is important, and the whole idea of looking at the structure of what is now the committee of the whole would be very valuable. Early on, I appreciate Counselor Brown's suggestion about maybe looking at some of the past motions that are in the books, that we might be able to free staff time up by examining those. However, with all respect to Counselor Martman, for me, this council has always been about, first and foremost, resetting the tone of respectful interactions. And yes, I think we've done a good job of that, if I may say so myself. I think this council has displayed that to this point, but I also think it's important that we formalize that commitment and we show that to the public. And I think that is a priority early in the new year. If we let it slide down the list, we know that all of these things are important, and we'll always find a reason to put it off. I think we need to address that first. I don't think it needs a three-hour session, but I think we can deal with it fairly quickly. Formalize what we believe in, have something that we can present to the public, and just reassert that this is how we are going to operate, and we do believe in a respectful workplace, and there we go. And I think in that same three-hour time, we might well be able to handle another topic as well. So I'm, that's quite all right, Mr. Sims.
This is part of the governance review, Your Worship.
So I appreciate the other comments, and I understand that we need to get to all of these as quickly as possible, but I really do think that that should come first. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, Your Worship. I too agree with Mr. Thorpe regarding the committees and how, in terms of our code of conduct, many of us, if not all of us campaigned on that, and I think it sends out a very firm note to the public that we are serious about this, and I would like to see that done sooner than later as well. I also don't particularly like the SARC building, only because these issues that we're going to be talking about are fundamental to the future of the city, and they're going to be involving millions of taxpayers' dollars over a long period of time. And I think the public should be, have the opportunity to participate and view these conversations as much as possible. And the SARC building, to me, never really had really good acoustics and video, which is why I like this venue here. I will certainly go to the SARC building if everyone wants there, because it'll be lonely by myself here. But I'll win all the arguments, but the question I think here is, is if we had a venue there, and if the acoustics and the video and the streaming was top-notch, I think it would be okay. I do know that the city and the VICC are working together to reconfigure this setting here, and there's the option of putting a board table in here.
So, Your Worship, I could speak to that briefly, because I did meet with the general manager of this facility last week down here, and that's why he was in here earlier, talking to me about this. So one of the things that George Cuff mentioned was the clarity of governance from the council table to the staff table, and that he has a problem in his mind with the continuity piece here. And there was a time when the staff tables were actually here, and/or could be over there, and we're thinking that that's probably something that would be a good start to the next year, is to make sure that, for the general public, they see councils at the front, and we're there as support and staff people, so we can actually move things around. The idea of a board table in the middle is, according to the general manager, doable, but a little troubling because of the camera angles and the video would be, it's not as practical as it sounds. So that option, he's not recommending as an easy one to do, because I just thought we'd put a table in the middle of this room and away we go. And he's saying, no, it's not quite that simple to get these cameras lined up and the audio part. So I do think we could create, go back to more of a format that, the way the room was actually designed, that would actually help show that governance piece, and it's just a matter of how you angle these tables to be separated. But the SARC building does have some challenges with the audio, and I'm not going to say that that doesn't exist, but we could go over that. But it's not, it's not just that that's the place where you're making a whole bunch of big decisions. This is the place where you would come to have those discussions and debates and decision-making is at this table. That's the place where you form your ideas, and here's the place you would come to make decisions. So I think missing all of that debate may be, you know, if some people want to listen to two or three hours of that, that's fine, but most people would be probably more interested in what you're deciding to do and why, and you could explain that. And we would certainly have minutes of those meetings and so forth prepared, so it's, that's certainly a downside of that room. But it is bigger than that room, and it would have the ability to house people, and people are somewhat used to going to that room. So I know, that's a fair criticism of that room.
Good. And one more, if I may. I would like to see our council strategic plan, things about public engagement, violence and policies, moved up to the front, only because why would we be discussing committees when we actually don't know where we're going and what we need committees to do? So once we figure out what direction we're changing or moving our ship in, at that point, we would then form committees or not form committees to help that process along. And I really want a public engagement thing in place to do that as well. So those are my kind of priorities.
Thank you. Counselor Brown.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Just thinking about how to word this. I value and trust Counselor Thorpe's experience, and so therefore, I would be in full support of having the code of conduct and the respectful workplace as an item that is a top priority. Just hearing what he's saying, it makes sense to me, and I do think the optics of it are important for both this table and the community, so.
Thank you. Counselor Martman.
Thank you. With all due respect, Counselor Thorpe, I heard what you said. I heard what you said, and I agree. I understand, because if I heard you correctly, you did say it is very important that the public understands and that we are abiding by a code of conduct, a code of conduct and the respectful workplace, but I also heard that perhaps it was not something that would need to take up three hours of our time. So in that regard, I would love to have that, and whatever other topic we feel should be there. I was just concerned about the length of time of a whole afternoon being spent on it, so definitely, we could have that. Thank you.
Counselor Armstrong.
Well, I'm going to have to disagree with Counselor Thorpe. I do understand the basis for it, however, without any consequences, it's meaningless. We had a code of conduct that people signed last time. It meant nothing to a lot of people. So unless there's consequences to it, to me, it's just another document that you sign that you don't even have to, you're either ethical or you're not. You can't teach ethics, in my opinion, so, and I believe everybody at this table is ethical. So I don't know if, what the purpose would be. Like, I mean, you can read the respectful workplace document, it's pretty black and white. I mean, it's pretty easy to go by. You can sign a code of conduct, but, so if I decide not to go with it, the only thing that remedy that's available is censure, and we heard what the public thinks about censure. So I just, to me, it's a lot of time for what? I don't believe in whistleblower policing either, but, yeah, living basement suites. Thank you.
Not judgmental.
The nature of this conversation has driven Counselor Hemmings off.
We have met, well, it is four o'clock, Your Worship.
Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, Your Worship. And this probably won't go very far, like many of my motions, but I'm not putting a motion for it. Is, there is another option for those who do have a daytime job, is that every Thursday, first Thursday of month, we have public hearings. That leaves three or four more Thursdays a month, which would be later in the afternoon, possibly, where we could have these conversations and allow more of the public who work during the days to possibly participate. And the reason I'm saying that is, like, all about this public engagement is, I think that if we do our job well, these workshops, or whatever we decide to call them, will be a big draw for a lot of people, because the topics and the things that we're talking about are phenomenal, and will be putting our place, our city on the map. And that's what I would like to see, that the more people who can participate, the better. Just a thought.
Counselor Martman.
So in reference to that, through the chair to Counselor Bonner, you're talking about people from the public who have daytime jobs who might not be able to attend in the afternoon?
Yes, and me, because I have been.
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to laugh at that. Okay, because I, because I also think of the work of staff that need to be with us as well, so, thank you.
Counselor Hemmings.
Thank you. If I may, through you to Counselor Bonner, I would just add as well that during the campaign, I think a lot of us talked about how to involve people from kind of a wide array of life circumstances into council, and I think if we have obligatory three evenings set, that makes it less available for a lot of folks, including moms with kids. So for me, I would like to see a more condensed schedule on one or two days, which is what we currently have. I'm not, I'm not against it, and I'll do it if that's the will of the majority, but that's just, those are my thoughts. And to your comment on the strat plan, why form committees in the absence of a strategic plan, that really, that makes a lot of sense to me. And so I will be bringing that notice of motion to tonight. So, sorry, that was poor process, but regarding the GPC.
Thank you. For what it's worth, I think on the issue of the code of conduct and respectful workplace, I think if, I think I can say with complete confidence, I've never seen a group who is less in need, in recent political history at least, in this community, of a code of conduct or a respectful workplace analysis, or the kind of training that one would expect. And I say that with affection. Having said that, Counselor Thorpe is exactly right on this. I think there are many in the community who want us to demonstrate this in a tangible way. Counselor Armstrong is quite right, pardon me, quite right, that without consequences, but it's hard to initiate consequences. I'm not sure we have the legal authority to create real consequences. The public gets to pass judgment on folks every four years, and maybe the provincial government will change the law to allow for municipal recall, or some other penalties or provisions that will deal with council members across this province, or regional directors, et cetera, who are seen by the general public to misbehave, but that's something well beyond our control. But even if it's not accompanied by penalties, I think it is important, because it is a message, in the same way that many parents tell their children what they should and shouldn't do, and somehow the penalties never get imposed, in my experience, certainly riding on B.C. ferries a lot, that's what I've generally observed over the years. I haven't seen any of the children keel-hauled. And so having said that, I think it is, I think it is an easy thing. I won't use the term win, because I think it reflects the attitude that brought many of the people to this table, to this table. And so let's get on with it. And I think it's important, because it also helps establish the rules by which we play this game, in addition to the procedures bylaw. In terms of timing, I think Counselor Martman pointed out something that we do tend to forget sometimes. The people who work for us and work hard on behalf of the city don't want to spend every evening of their work week at public meetings. And condensing it, I think, works well for most people, and I appreciate the stress it places on folks who have a day job as well, but I think that's more logical. In terms of priorities, I think that a lot of what's been said around the governance and priorities committee, around strategic planning, is important. What Counselor Hemmings had to say around the cultural plan, I think is very important. And it's not just because I think it's a huge economic driver, it's because I think it's part of, part of what makes this community such an attractive place to live. And I think that's, before I blither on too much longer, I think that's as much as I want to say, and if anyone has a response to that, please, but otherwise, I think.
Your Worship, I just wanted to clarify, I'm suggesting that you're very much a working council already, you've demonstrated that. We're actually adding more work time to your work plate by having these extra committee-of-the-hole sessions on Mondays. So we're not taking away anything from the public dialogue and discourse opportunities, we're actually adding more to the work part of your week, and we're suggesting to economize on Monday afternoons, might be one opportunity to do that. So I'm taking from this that we will come back on the 7th of January, which is, we'll be doing that work now, and ready for that on the whole subject of committees, and the work that we've already started to prepare for code of ethics, so we'd have probably the two topics there, and with the goal of getting that. the two topics there, and with the goal of getting that adopted in January. And then, of course, we have all the other workshops to fill out.
Counselor Armstrong. Thank you. Through you to Mr. Rudolph. One thing that I would like, if, if at all possible, when we're dealing with certain subjects that are upcoming, like, if, if a week beforehand, if there's reading materials that you think would be important for us, I'd like to have that link beforehand.
I'd like to, yes.
Thanks.
And, and we'd like to build a bit of a schedule so that we could, so you're aware of it, that we'll be dealing, for example, with reserves in March 11th. Now, that was the goal, is that we could populate and come up with a, a more robust schedule for that, even at first meeting in January, where we could try to slot things in with some certainty that you're aware of that, then that would be a good idea, I think. So, we'll endeavor to have that with, revisit the schedule, perhaps every time we have these meetings, to make sure we're on top of it, and get that, those materials out. And I did indicate in the little covering memo that we do need enough time in advance of those to get things, enough information to you in a good format, so it's useful. So, otherwise, we wouldn't be necessarily doing our job as well as we could.
Thank you very much, everyone. I think this is extremely useful, and as much as I appreciate the comments about the physical layout, I really think the SARC building is a much more productive and human place for the kinds of discussions that will be the, the topics that we're going to discuss. If no one has anything further, I'm going to ask for a motion that this report be received. Counselor Turley, seconded Counselor Bonner, any discussion? All those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. The next item is question period. Ms. Snellgrove, do we have any questions from the audience? Very good. Then a motion for adjournment would be appropriate. Counselor Thorpe, seconded Counselor Martman. Thank you. Any, all those, any, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much.